All right, bienvenidos a Santa Paula. Welcome to your home. So excited to call this meeting to order at 6:42. Our apologies for being a little late from closed session. We are going to do an invocation. Before we do that, I'm going to ask that everybody turn off your cellphones, please. And we're going to ask everyone to stand, and we have Deacon Alguin to share the invocation tonight.
Let us pray. Heavenly Creator, we gather here to thank you and humbly ask for your blessing on our community. Guide us by your wisdom and the grace given to us by the Holy Spirit so that we may be unified in our desires and our plans for our community. And let our goodwill be our compass. We acknowledge differences in opinions, but especially the hallmark of those differences are our faith in our Lord. We thank you for the recent rains, rains that will renew and invigorate our countryside and our hearts. We thank you for the gifts you have showered on us and that they will inspire us as we inspire others. And we remind ourselves that we must never grow weary of doing what is right. We are reminded that we see with our eyes, hear with our ears, and understand with our hearts. Amen.
Amen.
Councilmember Ornellis, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Please join me in the flag salute. Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Ms. Latchell, are you ready for roll call? Let's roll.
Councilmember Crosswhite?
Present.
Councilmember Cornejo?
Here.
Councilmember Ornellis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Juarez?
Here.
And Mayor Chavez?
Here.
All present.
Thank you so much. Ms. Castillo, closed session report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, council recessed in a closed session on matter 4A in the special agenda, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code 54957B1, title city manager. There were no reportable actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. We're going on to public comment. I'm going to invite you to speak on non-agenda items, and so we have Joseph Dobinsky Jr. Please join us.
Hi, good evening. My name is Joseph Dobinsky Jr., and I'm a resident of Camarillo, but I house manage at Santa Paula Theater Center, so I feel like I'm a part of the Santa Paula community. I also spend my mornings outside of 321 Cortez Circle, which is the local Camarillo ICE office where the raiders go in and out of. And I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention that the raids in Ventura County are increasing. They are not decreasing, no matter what you're hearing. Federal overreach has been given to these ICE agents who have been granted, quote, "total immunity," unquote, to carry out what they're doing. Most of these folks who take on this job are incapable and unworthy of wearing any uniforms. We have incidents like people accidentally ramming a house in Simi Valley. We had a volunteer have a gun pulled on him here in Santa Paula, right next to Best Barbecue. They rammed a truck in Oxnard and lied about why they did it. Instead, so they could take the person into custody. And then we've had massive actions like the Glass House raid in Camarillo and the recent A Street action that took place in Oxnard. Throughout all of this, what we're now seeing is that ICE lies about what they're doing, how they're going about it, whether they have warrants or not, whether they are picking up people who actually have a criminal history when the statistics show that they overwhelmingly do not. They're also denying these individuals due process in their facilities. They're often bullying people into signing voluntary departures rather than going through the due process that is due to everyone in the country, not just citizens, according to the Constitution. I come here to challenge especially law enforcement to investigate the limits of what federal jurisdiction is, about what it's meant by qualified immunity, and what are the limits of the supremacy clause in the Constitution? Because right now, it feels like no one is on the side of the immigrant community when it comes to ICE. I don't want to see law enforcement or anybody else take ICE at their word anymore because they're showing time and time again that they lie about what they're doing. And I would ask this council, do whatever you can to protect immigrants or to find orgs that can do it if they're both, either the City Council or the Santa Paula Police Department can't or won't do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dobinsky. We are moving on to Mr. Luke Faith.
Thank you. Greetings. My name is Luke Faith. My company is Carbon California. We operate oil fields north of the Piru, the Fillmore, and the Santa Paula area. I'm here tonight to make you aware of an incident that occurred in the oil fields north of the city of Santa Paula, and just to let you know some of the facts surrounding that incident. Yesterday, approximately 2:00 PM, that was November 18th, we received notification of a potential oil spill, began an immediate investigation, determined that we did indeed have a release of crude oil that originated at one of our facilities north of the city of Santa Paula. We immediately stood up what's called our Incident Management Team. In the state of California, you're required to have a spill contingency plan for just such an incident. The Incident Management Team immediately begun to enact the Incident Action Plan. It was determined that there were approximately 420 gallons of crude oil that went into a tributary of Caesar Creek. Our personnel were already on site, as I mentioned, immediately began cleanup operations. We've recovered a substantial portion of that already. We are continuing our operations to clean up the affected area, and we've already issued a press statement. We will be continuing to issue press statements, and we'll make ourselves available to yourselves, any other officials, anything else that we can provide as we continue to clean up this incident.
Are there questions for the chief on this?
Excuse me, since we're not agendized for this, it has to be only very quick direction.
Where do residents get the most updated information?
On vceemergency.com. Just look up VCE Emergency, it'll have the statement and all the facts about it and what's being done.
And folks can also sign up on there for the alerts, right?
Yes, vcealert...I'm not sure if it's .com or org, but vcealert is how you receive alerts and notifications on your cellphone.
And the city's releasing something as well, Mr. Singer?
We weren't going to do a separate press release, but our emergency services coordinator has been in communication with County Office of Emergency Services and working with the fire department and others that are on scene. So we've been kept well informed, and I appreciate the collaboration that's been formed around this.
Thank you. Mr. Juarez, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I believe I can answer this question. We have pending rain tomorrow. Does that affect the incident at all?
The volume of rain may indeed play a role in the operations taking place tomorrow. Spent most of the day developing what's called a contingency plan, putting in place provisions for preparing for that rain. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. I conclude our public comments on non-agenda items.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. We are moving to presentations, number seven. And I'm actually going to invite...is Mike in the room?
Yeah, he is.
Oh, there you are.
Yeah, he is.
Okay.
Just an update, vcealert is an app.
Yeah. That's what they can do.
So you can always download that app and get updates on anything of an emergency within the region. All right. Before we start, we invite the gentleman up. We're going to ask the city clerk, Ms. Latchell, to please play the video.
My name is Mike Teodres, and I'm the General Vice President for the International Union of Painters and Allied Trades. I was born and raised in Santa Paula. This is where my roots are. I didn't grow up that model stupid. I ran the streets a little bit. I was a kid that was angry, full of frustration, and there was nothing really in Santa Paula to motivate me into a direction or a job or a career. So for me, it was really important to bring this building and construction academy back to Santa Paula so that the students from the community that I was born in could have an opportunity to succeed in life. I started as a painter when I was about 19, 20 years old. I realized at an early age that this was a career. And my vision is for every kid to have an opportunity to get into a career that's offering you a good pay, that's offering you good benefits, and that's going to give you a retirement. One of the major resources that we're bringing in is our apprentices and instructors, people who are knowledgeable when it comes to the curriculum, when it comes to the build-out of the facility, when it comes to the tools that we may need.
My name's Ethan Valhalla. I'm a painting contractor. I think it's a good opportunity, offering these kids a chance to advance in life and learn more about trades, learn more about themselves, and how to go out into the world and make something of themselves.
My name's Julian Heron. I'm an instructor for the union, an apprenticeship, and I'm a journeyman painter and sand blaster. So I have commercial painting and industrial painting. So students that enroll in this academy will 100% have an advantage over people that come into the trade later on. Getting yourself involved, that way is a great first step into building your real future.
I started as apprentice, and I did my classes, got my certifications, and got certified, and I'm here journeyman now. Some of the stuff I enjoyed about the apprenticeship is a hands-on training, so you're learning. You're not just stuck at the same job site. You're seeing different sides.
Some of the skills that the students will learn in this building, the construction academy, will be blueprint reading, as well as learning the tools of the trade, you know, ball and finish preparation, as well as getting their certifications like OSHA certifications and boom, their certifications.
One of the ways to help young people is teaching them the trade itself, teaching them the skills they need to do the job. And then we also offer things like money management, college benefits, stuff like that.
We represent a multitude of trades. We represent the glazers. We represent the painters. We represent the florators. We represent the drywall finishers. So they have the opportunity, not only to be a glazer at the end of their four years, but they have the opportunity to go into the other class, different shifts. At this academy, they have an opportunity to learn a trade that no matter where they go in the United States, they can get a job, right? And make their money. And this is why we're so excited about this academy.
It's my honor as mayor to ask Mike to please come to the podium. Most recently, myself and other members of the council and city officials were present and heard your words, your powerful words that you shared with us. Your story shows the story of resilience, and it's a role model to our young people, that they have opportunities, no matter what your struggle is in life, you can make your own path and you can become a positive role model, a change maker, an influencer, a leader. And that's you, sir. You are Santa Paula. You are the face of Santa Paula, and I'm so proud to have invited you here today so that everybody in the city knows just what amazing work you are doing. I just saw the painting at the Boys and Girls Club most recently, the work you're doing to help these young people find a path, see themselves in others, because that's an important part of all this. And to be proud to say that you're from Santa Paula, sir, this council and this city call you a hometown hero. So with that said, say a few words, sir.
You know, I obviously thank you for those inspiring words. I truly appreciate it. You know, obviously, I want to thank you for recognizing, you know, myself and the trade, as well as the city council member. It does mean, it does mean a lot to me. It really does. From starting as a kid, not knowing where I was headed, and in reality, you know, when I was 17, 18, 19, I had no direction. You know, I bounced around a little bit until I found a career that I enjoyed and that I loved, and that made me feel a sense of worth, and it gave me a chance to succeed in life. And this is one of the reasons why, you know, I really pushed, and obviously with Christina's help and support, to really build an academy like this so that these kids, one day, can have the same opportunity as I have, right? We all need a start, right? We all sometimes need a second chance. And I got that second chance through this craft and through this trade that allowed me to grow in this organization. And as I said in my last, when we were over there at Park A, that, you know, I started as a painter into the director of organizing in Southern California, and then they gave me an opportunity to work for the international, and slowly moved up the ranks there and became the first Latino in the history, 138 years of our union, to be the general vice president overseeing a major region. So I...I'm certainly thankful for all you guys have done, but I know that it's going to take more than, obviously, myself and Christina, who's been a huge part of this success. I'm fortunate to have these videos, but obviously, without Christina and some of the other people that have helped throughout our organization, it would not have been as successful as it is now. So with that being said, I'm sure that moving forward, we're definitely going to need the help, obviously, of the city council, the school board, and anyone else who is willing to support these kids. Because at the end of the day, those kids that are in those academies, in all these academies, they're the future. They're the next mayor. They're the next board member. They're the next school board members, and they're the next general vice president at one point. And I would love to be here when these kids graduate from this program, when they graduate from our apprenticeship program, become journeymans, and become owners of companies, come back and give their story. What an impact that's going to be to their youth or to the people that are following behind them. So again, I want to thank you and thank all of you for really acknowledging and recognizing this academy, and I look forward to working with each and one of you. So thank you.
So Mike, 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 don't go anywhere, Mike.
I'd love to quit.
Are you on?
I'm actually gonna, before we take the photo, I'm going to ask you to invite Christina to join you at the podium real quick, because...
My partner in crime right here. And actually, I, you know, I can't speak more, or however you want to see it, about Christina. She has been an inspiration to me. She works, I was going to say a bad word, but I did it. She works very hard, and she truly believes in supporting these kids and truly believes in these academies. And I'm telling you, if it wasn't for her, I don't think we would be where we're at now. So thank you for that. I appreciate what you do.
Remain there, Christina. I'm going to invite you to the podium now, because I know what it took for you to be here today. You know, you changed the flight, right? And it's important to recognize what I consider, and this council considers hometown heroes, because you came back and you're giving back, and you are bringing other people with the same story to give back to the community. And I would just want to say, I've been so amazed at the level of professionalism, care, compassion, integrity that you display in your role. And I know now you're at VCOE with Ms. Ornellis. However, I know that you're having a larger impact, and I know that you never forget where you came from. So with that said, I allow you to say a few words to our audience today, standing next to the partner that you brought and made this possible. So you guys, this is a collective effort. No one does things by themselves.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I just want to say that it's an incredible honor to be here, being recognized by the community that raised me and trusted me with all the students throughout the years. It's an incredible honor, and Santa Paula's part of me. I stepped into the role of CTE about five years ago. The program was struggling, and I had one mission, and that mission was to strengthen it. And I, together with Mike's support and resources that he brought, we rebuilt the program into something that truly reflects the promise and the potential of Santa Paula's youth. A huge part of that success came from Mike and the union partners. And let me tell you, working with the union members is always a special kind of adventure, but through all that came something truly meaningful, the relationships, the friendships that I'll carry for a lifetime, and the partnership that I could always depend on. Tonight, I also want to honor the people who shaped my path. That's my family. They are here tonight. I come from a long line of dedicated educators from Santa Paula. My tias, if you could please stand. We have teachers, registrars. They are retired, and they dedicated their whole career to Santa Paula. My brother is a teacher. My sister is a teacher. My sister's a counselor. As you can see, education is our family business, and some of them are, like I said, their passion for serving Santa Paula families built the foundation of what I do today. So I thank you. I thank the community, and I thank Mike.
We're going to invite your families to join us for a photo, because your family's a big part of who you are. And we're going to give you certificates, and you're going to get a one-of-a-kind pen from me. And invite you, if you have a family member, loved one, brother, sister, if you have children, people here. La tia, primo.
My mom.
Don't be shy.
I also forgot to say that my mom and dad built a 25-year business here in Santa Paula in supporting the community. And this is why...
I want to thank my colleagues on the council, because this is my last official meeting as mayor, and with all things, we do it a little extra, let's say. So we're actually, this is a big treat, because you're going to get entertainment today, right? So with that said, I'm going to move to the next item on the agenda, which is a recognition of the rich culture that we have here in our beautiful city. And we don't forget about our culture, where we come from, our roots, and we celebrate those things. And most recently, I had the opportunity to participate and witness community coming together. And we keep having all these wonderful experiences that enrich our lives, but also show the example to our young people that you can be proud, you should be always proud of who you are and where you come from. And part of our culture is realizing that gift that we have. We have council members that speak Spanish, that understand that, that are married, that are in relationships, that care deeply. So they are part of our culture. We're all part of the same culture, right? And that's the human culture, and we each celebrate our differences and respect our diversity. So with that said, I'm going to invite a few folks up, because they were part of the organizing team that this person put together. And these are leaders in our community that I want to make sure that this council and this community recognize. So I'm actually going to invite the following people to come up. And once you come up, we have, like I mentioned, a beautiful mariachi here that, again, is part of our cultura. And so with that said, I'm going to invite Laura Espinoza from Latino Town Hall. Mr. Sam Suniga, the Metra advisor, he's not here, okay. Obviously, if there's any Metra students that might be here, if there's any Metra students, okay, you'll be sure to take it back to them. And the ringleader over here, Mr. Castanero, which is someone that cares deeply about Santa Paula, someone I've known, what, almost 20 years? And we still look good, right? But the heart, the care, and the love that he puts into his students in making sure that they open their eyes about the opportunities that life provides you, you are part of what makes this high school what it is. And I know that you are not alone, and there's other educators that are part of that ecosystem, and so we celebrate them as well. I'd like to invite you both to say a few words before the entertainment. So with that said...
All right. Well, it was an honor this year to have our first annual Dia de Muertos at Santa Paula High School. This is a five, over 5,000-year-old tradition that was brought to Ventura County by Javier Gomez. He's the real ringlinger behind all this. He's been training youth for, I think, about over 50 years. He's been a role model, Hall of Fame educator, and I've learned so much from him, watching him, how he speaks to young people, how he inspires, and how he redirects. I can't say enough about him. So anytime he tries to, talks about doing an event or doing a celebration, a lot of times, I do it out of selfishness, so I can learn from a master teacher. And so I want to thank the council and the mayor for this opportunity to celebrate his legacy. I'm one of many educators that he's touched, many youth that he's touched, and I can't say enough about it. But we had a wonderful celebration, and like you said, this is about passing on tradition. The focus of Dia de Dead is about honoring your family and honoring those who passed your ancestors. And in this day and age, we like to say our motto at the high school is building bonds. Well, I'm going to add a little to that. We build bonds through values. And this cultural celebration that I know Councilman Crosswhite and Mayor Chavez were attending, and I'm not sure who else was there, but I'll just tell you, this is something that I think our youth deeply need right now. Values are very important, and so it was really honoring, a great celebration of family values.
Just want to say a tremendous acknowledgement, well-deserved, by Mr. Castanero and Senor Javier Gomez. These kinds of events held at the high school itself are important, because it's not just an academic institution, it's a cultural institution, and that day's celebration was something to be proud of. So thank you for this nice recognition, but for acknowledging the real heroes, Mr. Gomez and Mr. Castanero, thank you.
I'm going to ask you both to come to the side as we welcome this marvelous group of young people. And Maestro Gomez, how many do we have? Let me see how many. Let me see how we're gonna do this. Yeah. Mr. G.
Yes.
How about they wrap around here and we go over there? Yeah? So they're gonna play a couple of songs for you.
Go around it, go around it. You guys could be over here. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna play this way then?
You guys are the stars.
Good for the audience.
Eileen, you might have to be over here. Oh, we have to use, we have to use the mayor's microphone then. Go in the middle, Mia, go in the middle. We had it set up so that we were. Calaveras, despiertense! Porque la muerte no se ha ido, ha llegado a Santa Paula para asistir una junta con el alcalde de la ciudad y sus compañeros. Calaveras, wake up! Death has not left us, it's still lingering in our communities. It has come to Santa Paula because there's many muertos still lying around wanting to tell their stories. So, calaveras, échale ganas! One, two, three, one. In the immortal words of Cesar Chavez, "The future of our community depends on what we do with our children, how we inspire them, how we empower them, how we enlighten them to realize their full potential, become the next leaders of our community. For one day, they will replace all of us that are here." So this is the future of our community. So what we do in our center is based on the philosophy of Cesar Chavez, to empower the next generation of great leaders. In the center is the next future District Attorney for the state of California. And I don't say that lightly. She is destined for that. Because just recently, one of my young boys that came when he was a pianist and played classical music at our center and started singing and dancing and acting in place, came back to our center as a 45-year-old boy that remembers his day as, like Eileen, and now he's an ambassador for the United States in a country next to Australia. So he came over, was an intelligence officer for the army, working with generals all around the world. And so I know that the future is in these students who are being empowered and enlightened to find out their full potential of being great for our community. So. And as we thank, I present to you, Solana Espinoza. Only one time in life do we have a chance to change the future.
I'm gonna ask everyone to get closer for a photo. Mr. G, could you come to the front here? Mr. Castanero. Ms. Espinoza.
Our crowd is lucky that we didn't sing the last song, which was "Para que me haces llorar", because we always have to ask our beloved loved ones who passed on, why do they make us cry in these sad times? So for all of you.
Get closer. Council members, can we have you here as well, please? Or on the, on the chairs? Ms. Crosswhite, when's the last time we had a mariachi at a city council meeting? Yeah, I think you can capture everybody on the chairs, yeah? And then grab, get behind the. Don't be shy, you guys are stars.
We have to take a picture of the mayor with a vihuela. I was gonna say the guitar rumba, whatever.
Thank you so much. Gracias. And again, thank you council members for indulging me this evening. But we couldn't resist that.
I cried with the first song. Warning about the third song, I cried with the first one.
Monica?
I know. With mariachi.
The last recognition I have for this evening, I'm gonna invite Master Carlos Urutia to join us at the podium. Por favor, senor. Pasa adelante. And si, por favor que vengan. Everybody, you're gonna join? Thank you. This group of young people are part of learning the art of Taekwondo. And so I wanted to make sure that we acknowledge these stars and you have an opportunity to share a little bit about them. But Ms. Urutia has come to Santa Paula to bring this art and to help youth in our community access this opportunity. And so I wanted, if you've seen them, if they look familiar to you, it's because they probably walked in the parade that we had for Labor Day, the holiday parade. They work with Project Esperanza. And so I wanted to make sure that you knew how important it was for, to recognize your art and what it does to help our young people. And so with that, I have some recognitions for you and then for your team. But I'd like to give you an opportunity to say a few words.
Okay, sure. Okay. The evening for everybody? Yes.
Al micrófono, sí.
Okay, I'm Mr. Urutia. I'm very happy to stay here again for a second time because we work hard with this community, with the, I have a lot of students here in Santa Paula. And when we came here on the first night, my students graduate and get at the first dan. But right now, I'm going to say something. There going to be a second dan next month. But in long, long time, we work hard with them and they already has recognition for instructor because they teaching classes already and help the community for the, you know, the little ones, you know, the teenagers. And my students going to speech today because I teaching them to, you know, develop a skill to speech, okay? And right now, Mr. Esteban, he's going, he going to say something, okay? Because you need see, he prepare in Taekwondo, he have more confidence. Everybody has more confidence, but he's going to speech right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for having us here today. I just wanted to give a thanks to our amazing mayor. You've been so active in our community, helping us even going to some of our, some of our quizzes that we had, some of our tests. Through our journey in Taekwondo, we've always been, felt very supported through our community. We've done the parade several times. And overall, right now, we've been a black belt and we're training to be instructors, seeing how helping the younger kids in our community, upbringing them, uplifting them, overall, just making our home a better place for everyone. And I wanted to give a thanks to all of you community members for supporting us in every step of our journey in Taekwondo. Thank you all.
You see, you speak fluent, no nervous, nothing, okay? Because we promote, you know, leaders for this community. Okay, Ms. Allison, sir, we have something for you, okay? She's going to read something because I appreciate you helped a lot for this community, Taekwondo, Project Esperanza too. And we have something for you and she's going to, what did the certification say?
Certificate of Appreciation. This certificate is proudly presented to Pedro Chavez, Santa Paula Mayor. In recognition of your outstanding leadership, dedication, and unwavering support to our community and to the mission of Urutia's Taekwondo Academy, your commitment to fostering excellence, discipline, and unity among our youth embodies the five guiding principles of Taekwondo: Discipline, Perseverance, Integrity, Humility, and Self-Control. Through your leadership and advocacy, you have inspired our students to pursue not only martial arts excellence, but also to become strong, respectful citizens who uplift. who uplift others and strengthen the fabric of our community. With deepest gratitude, we honor you during our Kookie One Award Ceremony for your contributions to the growth of character, leadership, and community spirit throughout Ventura County.
Wow. Thank you.
And we have this matter too. This recognition is from Kookie One, from Korea, and the World Taekwondo Federation too. Okay, amazing, amazing, amazing. Thank you for support. Thank you very much, sir. And I have this for you, okay? It's amazing, congratulations.
Wow. You guys surprised me. About you guys, right? You're the future, I'm so proud of you. And I'm gonna give you these certificates on behalf of all of us at the council. And keep doing what you're doing. Allison, Medina, because we have two. There you go. Esteban, sir, future mayor there. Jacorina, here you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Come over here, I'm sorry.
Oh, oh, picture, yeah. So much, thank you, guys. All right. Next up, we're going to invite, Susie, I see you're in the house. Can you please come up? And we're gonna have the presentation of, for Ms. Lopez-Garcia, who serves as the Executive Director of Community Action Ventura County. Welcome back.
Thank you. Yes. Well, is it, it's on? Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. Again, my name's Susie Lopez-Garcia. Such a privilege to be here. I very much enjoyed the presentations. I actually was a student of Mr. Gomez, so when I saw him at the door, and I think what amazes me is, one, he looks the same since I was, I started with him at eight years old, I'm 42 now. And every time I see him, I waved at him and he's like, hi, Susie. And I was like, wow. So it's just amazing and it was great to be part of that and see all of that today. But today, I am here as Executive Director of Community Action of Ventura County. We are a nonprofit who serves the whole county. And I think the last time I was here was about two years ago. So thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on some of the work we've been doing out here in Santa Paula. Just a reminder, our mission statement is really focused on establishing pathways out of poverty through advocacy partnerships and services that promote dignity and self-sufficiency. What's unique about us? So a little bit of our structure. We are a national organization, so we do have community actions throughout the U.S. And we serve almost all counties in the U.S. And so community action here locally is your Ventura County. Because we are national, we also are structured a certain way where we have a tripartite board. And what that means is one-third of our Board of Directors are appointed by the Board of Supervisors. So they are elected officials. So if you recognize a familiar face on the picture here, I am with Cristina Villasenor, who is the mayor of Fillmore. She is the appointee for representing this district. One-third is of the private sector. So it could be anyone from faith-based, law enforcement, business owner. And then the other third of the board is of the low-income community. So they're either a member of, they are experiencing or going through low income, or they are representing a low-income community. So they could work in an organization representing that. We do depend on volunteer support, so to run a lot of our programs, specifically our food program. And then maximum feasible participation. We have hired people who have gone through our programs, who have come in through services and then have applied to be staff members as well or have volunteered with us. So expanding our reach. We are housed and our main headquarters is in Oxnard. So that is the bottom-left picture that you see there. That is our front office where we have all of our staff. We have about 24 staff members right now. It's attached to a warehouse, so that is where we do our food distribution, our homeless services. But we did start expanding in the last couple of years. We opened a satellite office in Simi Valley. And then in 2023, we opened an office here in Santa Paula, at El Centro del Pueblo. So we're pretty close to here. And then we did just open in Thousand Oaks in June of 2025, under Community Conscience. And so if you see and notice, Oxnard is our only standalone building. All of the other satellite offices are housed within other services. And so that's, that lets us be able to make referrals across to other organizations in the same space as us. So our programs and a little bit about how we're funded. Our major grant is the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, LIHEEP. It is a government grant. It's administered through the state. But it does fund our weatherization program and our utility payments. And so I bring that up because right now, because of everything that happened with the government shutdown, we have kind of slowed down a lot of our work under that. We do still have help with utility assistance, but our weatherization had moved through their funding because we were supposed to start our new contract in November. But that has been delayed and so we're hoping to pick up that side in January. Thankfully, we still had some utility assistance, so we're gonna work through that till the end of the year while we're waiting for the new, for the next year's funding. The other funding, Community Service Block Grant, which is actually what makes us a community action. It is also a federal grant. And that one runs January through December. But it's the one that really provides a lot of support and it's guided by our community needs assessment. So we do complete a community needs assessment every two years. And based on that, that's how we decide how that funding will be used. It is currently being used to support our food programs, our diaper distribution, our community workshops, and our unsheltered services in Oxnard. So a little bit more about utility payment assistance. I think this might be the program that most of you are more familiar with. So we do still have funding. It is for gas, electricity, or propane. It is based on income, so we do need to look at the household's income based on the number of people living there. We do usually prioritize, depending on funding and how that's going, vulnerable populations. So that means households with seniors, with children under five, and with people with disabilities. But right now, we are focused on income and that's what we're looking at. People can apply one time per calendar year. So a lot of our recurring clients for this program are a lot of our seniors who are on a fixed income. And so they're the ones that we usually see one time per year. And that is the team that is doing most of the outreach. I think they were here this past weekend at Once de Palaves. And so they're the ones that usually will go out and give out more information throughout the county when there's any resource fairs or any community events. And then just giving you the number. For utility payments here in Santa Paula, so far this year for 2025, we've done 120 utility payments for residents here in Santa Paula, which totals to a little, almost $85,000 that has come into residents here locally. And then to break that down a little bit more what that means. So I said 120 households. If you count, that's just a family, right, or a household. But if you count everyone within that household, it's a total of 334 people that we have been able to help. And to break that down into two sections. Those that we helped that were already past due, had past due notices or were already disconnected. We helped 71 households out of those 120 for about $62,000. And those that were current on their bills but qualified based on income, we helped about 49. And what that means is if they fit all the qualifications, but they're struggling to figure out how they're paying that month after month, they come in. And if they aren't past due, we're able to do a credit into their account and then it gets subtracted from there. So just wanted to give you that breakdown of how many people we are seeing with disconnections and past due notices that were able to help with electricity and gas. And majority have been electricity, not gas. I know we had water in the past, but that was a one-time grant during COVID that we did provide water assistance. We're currently not doing that right now. And then our weatherization program. Again, same income guidelines as our utility assistance. We look at being able to pay utility bill as the, like, emergency need. I need to get through this bill. But for the long term, our weatherization team can go in, make an assessment of the home and see what can be done in the home. Safety tests as well, carbon monoxide leakage. They test all the gas appliances, including the furnace, the water heater, the stove, the microwave. They even look at refrigerators, washers, and dryers. And we're able to replace all those items I just mentioned. We're able to replace them. We're able to look at insulation in the home. We're able to look at different things in the home that can be, that can help those utility payments be lowered. It could be someone who's renting or a homeowner. So it doesn't necessarily have to be the homeowner. We take the renter's income if they are renting. The only thing is, we need the homeowner's approval to do anything in the home. So we can do apartments, mobile home, and houses as well. If you look at the number for weatherization, we've weatherized eight homes. And in those eight homes, it totaled over $34,000. And those were for Santa Paula as well. And then just to give you a picture, you know, things, we'll take pictures and things of what needs to be replaced. So if someone's refrigerator, they were not functioning correctly. They weren't keeping the food at appropriate levels. And so that, again, was also wasting food. And so to be able to replace a refrigerator, it wasn't just about, you know, wasting energy. It was really to keep food available in that home. So energy heating and cooling services. We did five homes under that for $23,000. And that is really focused on furnaces and water heaters that we look at. Full weatherization is when we look at all the other appliances as well. And just a client success story. We did serve a 97-year-old senior citizen here in Santa Paula. Again, fixed income. And so we were able to weatherize their home, which was a little bit under $4,000. And then we were also able to pay her electricity bill of $362. And in Oxnard, we do provide services for our unsheltered community. So we focus mostly on hygiene support and mail. So we are a mailing address in Oxnard if someone needs that. And then we provide referrals. We only do that Mondays and Fridays, 8 to 12. We are partnering with, with different organizations in the county, including Rescue Mission, who provides lunches for us during that time. We actually became their distribution side for Rescue Mission lunches now. They don't distribute at the Rescue Mission. They distribute at Community Action in Oxnard. So we usually see a little trickle of people throughout the week. And we also have a partnership with Public Health and Behavioral Health who come out to give out other resources during those services for people for referrals as well. And our biggest program, and this really changed after COVID. Our food pantry used to be, once a week, run by a part-time staff and volunteers. Now we have multiple staff and volunteers running this. So we have a drive-through food distribution in Oxnard. It's open to anyone in the county. We do get sometimes some people that that time works for them or they're able to be there to pick up food from different parts of the county. It says 300, this last Thursday, we saw 385 people come through that Thursday. And that's households. So we have seen a steady increase in the need of food. We're doing it bi-weekly in partnership with Food Forward as well and Food Share. Food Forward, we became a food hub for other pantries with Food Forward. So Food Forward delivers a truckload of about, sometimes 20 pallets of produce into our, the back of our warehouse. We then have a list of pantries that come pick up food from us. And so here locally, Poder Popular is picking up produce from us to get out in Santa Paula. So they are one of those pantries that picks up from us. And so we're kind of the middle person of coordinating the delivery, the unloading, sorting, and then getting it out to other pantries to take for distribution. The 211 and Amazon collaboration just ended. So we were getting, we were propping boxes on Wednesdays to get out to seniors and people with disabilities that couldn't get to us. And Amazon drivers were getting those out. That did just end, but what we've been doing is there's such a high need for food in the community and some families that are not feeling safe to come out. So we do have organizations that are doing the pickups and they're doing the delivery. So we just pack the food, get it ready, and they take care of delivering. We served about 171 households, of households that reside in Santa Paula. And so we had about 290 seniors that have also benefited from our food program from Santa Paula. And like I mentioned, the CSBG grant. I'm giving you numbers for 2024 because in that year, we did have a grant with Gold Coast Health Plan. And we were able to do a Medi-Cal Navigator program. And we actually had one staff member who was full-time stationed out of our Santa Paula satellite office, and she is from Santa Paula. So it was a perfect fit. She did a lot of the outreach, a lot of the help with helping people navigate through their Medi-Cal, either to renew or how to access all the programs, like all the eligibility and all the resources that they offered. We also hosted a senior adult digital clinic. We provided classes and at the end of the classes, the cohort ended, we were able to give out laptops to every single participant. And they were all seniors. So they learned everything from sending up an email. And at the end, they learned how to Zoom and could use Zoom, which is very important for telehealth, I think, right now. Being able to access that and know how to do that. We've had financial wellness workshops, mental wellness. We did also do diaper distributions out here in Santa Paula in collaboration with Poder Popular. Got baby formula out. And a lot of these things, really, I do want to give recognition to Poder Popular because this was in partnership with them that they helped us organize this and execute all these programs. And in last fall, we started with Food Share in distributing diapers out of our Oxnard location. So we are listed under their diaper banks, where people can go to our location to pick up diapers as well. Last thing. So this year, we were recognized as the Nonprofit of the Year through Assembly Member Steve Bennett's office. So we're just sharing a couple of those pictures here. So we're very thankful for the recognition. There was a lot of work done these last couple of years, especially coming out of COVID. Funding has changed so much this year, so we've had to pull back on some of those services. But we're definitely keeping an ear out on what the needs are in the community and see how we can really do that through partnerships and how we can support others as well. And last thing, I am, this is the last thing. I am inviting you. We are having an event, December 11th, to celebrate. We are hitting our 60th anniversary. So we're celebrating that, the Nonprofit of the Year. And we are also doing awards. So we usually have a Partner of the Year. Last year was Food Share. This year will be Our Redeemer Lutheran Church. And we also have a Volunteer of the Year. And then we do a special Founder's Award. We call it our Lee Regan Award to a community member that has really worked with us in getting services out and connecting us to the community. So last year, that was our mayor, Pedro Chavez, who received that award. This year, we have selected Supervisor Yanay Lopez as the recipient. So she will be awarded that day because she has been helping to ensure that we're at meetings, we're at locations to bring our services to the community. So if you're free December 11th, we'd love to have you there. Any questions? That is our social media link, so you can follow us. We always provide updates on our programs or any changes.
Wonderful. Council member, Cornelia, kick us off.
Thank you for your presentation, and I wasn't aware of all that you do. I do have a question, though, because you're a large organization. If someone makes a donation to you, can they, are they allowed to say specifically that it would go to, to fund in Santa Paula or causes in Santa Paula?
They are. And I've received that before where they thought we were only in Santa Paula, actually. And I said, no, we're countywide. So you can designate or make a note on your donation of what you want to support. Thankfully, they did like a broad, anything in Santa Paula, and so we were able to do that. that.
Okay, thank you.
Amazing work, again, the home weather, weather, weatherization program. Is there still funding available for that program? How does that funding work? Is it going to be renewed in January?
It was supposed to start in November, and really, it is coming, that was my biggest fear, right? Is that a program likely being cut? Because it got thrown out, likely got thrown out. It's coming, it just was delayed. So, we were on the spending of hitting our goals and like where we're going to end, and because we're supposed to start our new funding in November, we were wrapping that up, and then everything just happened, and so we're waiting. The last thing we were told is, yes, you're getting the money, it's just now waiting for the money to funnel through from federal to state to us. They are prioritizing it, because like I said, we do furnaces, so a lot of the heating. So they are prioritizing, and the last I heard is they're trying to push it out by the end of the month, but I don't know if that means they'll actually make it here. Hopefully that by December, we're able to see that, so we can start work. But right now, we are able to do intakes to start that process, we just can't do the actual assessments and all the work in the home yet.
That's a great program, I don't think people really realize how impactful that can be to your household and to your utility costs because of the old appliances that our homes have, that many homes in our community have. So, thank you for what you do, and again, thank you for coming today, you had a question.
I do.
Oh, go ahead.
I have a question. For renters, you mentioned that they don't have to be homeowners, but they have to get the sign-off from the owner. How does that process work? Are they able to apply directly to your agency and then you contact the owner for approval?
We can contact them, there is a form for the homeowner, because when, as soon as they check off that they are a renter, there's a specific form that we have. The owner has to approve and sign that off. There is also some wording on there around that they can't increase the rent right after we do those, so there is some writing that they're also agreeing to that.
That was my next question.
Yeah, so I know that comes up, and again, we're taking the income of the renter, not the owner, it's just the approval to go into the home and do some of those repairs and things we're going to start touching, and really, it's a benefit to them because that's something that they're not going to have to do. But we are aware of, I don't know how much we could enforce it, but it is in something that we can write, and we haven't had to run into that, but I don't know how long, maybe in the year, but it is written in there that not, they're not going to increase the rent just because we did that.
Perfect. And I just wanted to say, for those listening that may be interested, while you were presenting, I looked on your website, and finding the income guidelines is very easy, and that was something that I wanted to know. So, anyone that's interested, it's very easy to find on the website under eligibility requirement. So I appreciate that being so simple to find, and thank you for the presentation.
No, thank you, and yes, those programs are the only ones that have the income requirement, the utility and weatherization. All our other programs, if you need food, show up, we'll give you food, there's no process or intake to go through that, we will get you food.
Thank you, and just to add to where, to find it on the website, it's Ventura, it's Community Action Ventura County.org, but it's under the Get Help tab, where you could find eligibility requirements and follow the process on there.
You just reminded me of something. Those change every year, so we do update, and the other thing is, if you apply, we usually say you can't reapply if you get denied, and within 30 day, in 30 days, because sometimes rain, everything affects income or jobs, you can reapply if your income changes, and then we can reevaluate that as well.
Perfect, thank you.
And Mr. Senior, can we make sure that the information gets out to our residents, especially around that program in particular? Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Suzie. I'm going to, there was somebody that wanted to mention, do a public comment, anonymous, is anonymous here? Okay, so you're welcome to come up, real quick, if you can set the timer, making an accommodation real quick, and then we'll go to item 7F. Welcome.
Hello, how's it going?
Good.
Good evening, I am a resident of 131 Ferris Drive. I am speaking anonymously tonight for my safety reasons. My father is a disabled person, and where I live, there is no lights. There is no sidewalks. I live on the north side of our street. If I'm not there to carry my father, my father would have no way of getting home. This violates the American with Disability Acts, and it traps vulnerable residents within its own homes. The city has a sidewalk trials that is constantly overgrown, turns into very mud after every rain, and every single emergency box is damaged and unusable. It has been only like this for years. If someone has a medical emergency, or has any actual emergency to run about, there is no box to where anybody could reach for that help. Yet, the streets on Main Street will run down 24 hours a day. Veterans parks will run the water, the sprinklers, for hours during the night. And if you guys need the proof, I have pictures, but you guys can go ahead and just look outside of our community. It is not that hard to see. And now, we're spending the city measure on T's monies to repave the same central street, like 10th and A Street, like we've done the last two to three years, while the street that I live on has no lights or a sidewalk. City council members of Santa Paula, after everything that you guys have, I've shown you or heard, you guys have heard, I have one question. When will the north side of my street on Ferris Drive finally have a street light and a sidewalk for my disabled father to be able to walk on? And for every other resident that lives out there, not only my father. Can you guys give me a concrete date, or a month, or a season, in which this walk will actually start? Because I believe that my father deserves to hear an actual date of when he'd be able to walk through the streets. If there is no answer, I will take this as an answer. And if you guys do not, I will reach ADA within 30 days.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Yes, please.
So, I wasn't clear on the street.
131 Ferris.
131 Ferris?
Drive, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, you guys, for the rest of your night.
Take a look at that, thank you.
And then just, would you remind folks of our study session on Rhodes?
Yes, so we are going to have an opportunity to talk about our next cycle of pavement projects and infrastructure improvements at a workshop on December 2nd, that'll be held at the community center at 6 o'clock in the evening, we'll be getting information out about that in the coming days.
So, December 2nd, we're going to invite the community to participate in a study session to look at the plan for the next five years for pavement management. So this is an open invitation to participate and share your concerns about the streets, so see how that falls into the priorities for the city. So thank you for your engagement on that. All right, moving on to our item 7F, I'm going to ask our speakers if they wouldn't mind waiting till after the presentation. We have Marcos and Zilali. You guys okay? Okay. All right, we're going to invite M. Johnson, Director of Climate Programs, the Central Coast Community Resilience Hubs Accelerator on behalf of Community Environmental Council. Welcome.
Thank you so much for having me, and it's a pleasure to be here today, especially today, this is some of the most heartwarming city council meetings I've ever been to, so thank you. So we'll be pulling up the presentation. My name is M. Johnson, I am the Director of Climate Programs for Community Environmental Council, a nonprofit organization that serves the tri-county region, so we serve San Luis Obispo County, Santa Barbara County, and Ventura County. And I'm going to be just presenting about our Central Coast Community Resilience Hub Accelerator, defining community resilience hubs and technical assistance resources available to you all right now, and some opportunities to consider and think about as you move forward, to think about investments in Santa Paula, Santa Paula Community Resilience Hubs. Our Resilience Hub Accelerator was born out of a pilot program with the County of Santa Barbara's Emergency Management and Sustainability Divisions. We really learned through this program what types of assistance we could provide to community facilities who are already providing essential emergency support services for their communities. So we've heard from some today, and we know of these types of community facilities, our food hubs, our community centers, our churches, school districts, health clinics, all of these essential trusted community facilities often are the first places folks go during emergency, because they trust them and they know that they could connect them to resources. The purpose of community resilience hubs is investing in these already existing trusted facilities in your neighborhood and supplying them with staff training, facility retrofits, and capacity grants, so they can continue offering the programming and services that they already are providing, as well as enhancing their facilities and staff capacity to provide emergency services before, during, and after disaster. So at Community Environmental Council, we've created a number of educational materials that help explain and allow for different types of neighborhoods and community members to understand how to create a community resilience hub. You can find more information about that on our website here, I also have printed copies of my presentation I can leave out for community members to take. And so you can see here that resilience hubs are not a one-size-fits-all solution, not all resilience hubs provide off-grid charging, community workforce programming, food distribution, water distribution, clean air centers, cooling centers, warming centers, evacuation centers, these are all types of services that exist that community members and local governments can consider enhancing at trusted community facilities. So to give you an example, oh, and before I give you that example, I'd also wanted to point your attention to, through this pilot program, we realized that there are important facets for planning and designing and developing, and ultimately finding funding for those community resilience hubs. So we've created a toolkit designed for local government leaders and community facilities, it's now published on the Central Coast Climate Collaboratives website here, and you can find there a resource library and a step-by-step guide of the following modules that really contain the components of developing a resilience hub, including creating a project team with your community members and local government agencies, conducting inclusive community engagement to ensure that local voices guide where facilities that you want to invest in should be, and local champions who might want to be a part of this effort as leaders in their community. There's a module on facility retrofits and facility improvements, what to expect, what type of permitting to expect, what types of incentive programs are already out there for facilities, as well as creating funding strategies for these community facilities and other resources available. Our accelerator functions, so going back to the technical assistance program that Community Environmental Council is now leading for our tri-county region, and right now, we are also supporting Monterey Bay area governments as well with replicating our training up in the northern part of the Central Coast. So the types of activities that our team can provide are assessing climate hazards and social vulnerabilities at risks in different neighborhoods, to give a snapshot of what types of resources are available based on the existing risks and vulnerabilities of your community, using that information as well as community engagement to help map locations for establishing resilience hubs. And then we often support local agencies and facilities with connecting to the appropriate government agency partner to create formalized MOUs with their emergency services, for instance, or with their cities, or with their air pollution control districts, so that they can start having more regular services and resources coming from the appropriate agency, hopefully creating a reciprocal, mutual reciprocal relationship between our community facilities and our local governments responsible for emergency management. We also supply workshops and training support for staff and board members, and when, especially in our region, including Ventura County, we work closely with the SoCal Renewable Energy Network, the tri-county regional energy network, as well as Clean Power Alliance, to connect existing rebates and incentive programs for weatherization, electrification, and energy auditing capabilities that can help those facilities perhaps become supportive for, during power outages. And then we also, as, for specific state grants, we're providing grant writing assistance and helping create the operational and funding plans needed in order to apply. I did want to touch on some of these mapping tools that we found to be some of the most helpful mapping tools to get the breadth of resources that could be available for your neighborhood, and so specifically calling out that, the, first, the FEMA National Risk Mapping Tool, which helps also define disaster resilience zones throughout the nation. So if you were to go onto that map and, and type in Santa Paula, you can start to see, based on FEMA's risk calculations, which take into account hazards of an area, as well as 22 community risk, resilience risk factors, that kind of leads to this FEMA-specific risk index, which takes the estimated annual loss of that region, and it times, it timeses that loss by the social vulnerability metrics, and divides that by those 22 community resilience metrics, and that's what you get with the FEMA mapping tool. So in Santa Paula, the highest hazards that have the highest loss capabilities and have the highest risk in terms of the community not being prepared to address them for Santa Paula are heat, risk, wildfire, and earthquake. Another snapshot tool I wanted to point your attention to is the California Department of Public Health Climate and Health Vulnerability Map, and it uses, through medical service studies, another form of calculating social vulnerabilities, such as, could be a fine particulate matter for an area, it uses those high fire severity zone maps that are new in California, it takes into account poverty rates and other vulnerability factors like age, the number of individuals over the age of 65, the percentage of households without health insurance, the percentage of households without vehicle ownership, shade and tree canopy, these are the types of vulnerabilities that they're mapping. So for Santa Paula, I wanted to point out that when you look at the CDPH mapping tool, it shows Ventura County, if you zoom in by census tract, it will start to like layer, and that's when you can start to see Santa Paula. And specifically, something to consider, how do we structure community resilience hubs for Santa Paula based on these metrics, is that Santa Paula is the first most vulnerable community in Ventura County in relation to the percentage of households without vehicle ownership. So considering how folks get to places for emergency support is something to consider. And Santa Paula is the second most vulnerable place in Ventura County related to the aging population, so considering how Santa Paula supports its senior citizens to, to access different services during, before, during, or after emergencies is also a critical thing to take into account. Here's the examples I was talking about, sorry, I kind of forgot the, where they were on my slides. So, three community resilience hubs that we supported in Santa Barbara County look very different from one another, and I wanted to provide those examples to give you an idea that this form of resilience hub development can look different depending on where you are and what your community's assets and strengths and local championship have at their disposal. So the first one on the left is Blue Sky Center in the Quayama Valley in northeastern Santa Barbara County, and they utilize more of a hub-and-spoke model for resilience hubs, so this is a rural, unincorporated region. The Community Economic Development Organization, which is also an arts organization, Blue Sky Center, was the hub for evacuation services and supporting firefighters and emergency caches of supplies, but they prefer to have food distribution coming out of the Family Resource Center and Cooling Center coming out and Cooling Center coming out of the school district. And they already have existing partnerships between those entities providing different services. So they've considered the resilience hub to be more of this network model. And due to that, they've already brought in over $2 million of investment to those three agencies to continue to provide capacity for the services they're already doing. And right now they're working on a $20 million proposal for creating a community microgrid that would be more self-sufficient for the community itself. And then the example in the middle is the Franklin Neighborhood Center and Eastside Library in the city of Santa Barbara. And this, due to it being city-owned, this process is, it's, for cities, it might be most cost-effective and efficient to consider resilience hubs at all of the sites that they own and that community members utilize. So they ended up looping in this project, really focusing in on battery storage and power outage capabilities. And right now they are working on a grant, multiple grant proposals to bring multiple community, city-owned facilities off-grid at the same time under one like cost purchase agreement. And so they're taking more of this like replicable, one service replicated at multiple buildings model. And then the example on the right side is one of the examples that is like a champion example of resilience hubs, which is Girls Inc. of Carpenteria, a nonprofit organization that provides after-school programming for girls and families. And they were really, you know, they have a gymnasium and other facility support. So they're doing that all-in-one building model. So they've done staff training for both climate adaptation vulnerability training, as well as emergency response training. They've, they're actively retrofitting their facility, expanding their solar, including batteries. We were able to help them set up an MOU with their emergency services department and city directly to allow for their site to become a shelter site, an evacuation site during emergencies. And due to that partnership, now they're going to be getting ongoing annual resources directly to their facility to enable them to continuously be that partner. And then they've also expanded and started working with multiple facilities within the city of Carpenteria, offering multi, biannual, sometimes quarterly, community resilience fairs in the city of Carpenteria where Children's Project and Fire Chiefs are, you know, actively handing out emergency supplies to their community, they're doing CERT trainings on the spot, and they're like creating this self-preparedness, self-reliance atmosphere for the city of Carpenteria. So all of that being said, there are a number of things to consider here, and I wanted to just really high-level point you into the discussion around fundraising or understanding how to find funding for these types of services. What CEC does is we help facilities find what is available right now through their city or through their emergency managers. What is something also available that we can connect them to, such as renewable energy network incentives or air pollution control district incentives for clean air. There are some things that are a little bit more nimble and agile and we can keep stacking for facilities. And then there are three large grant programs at the state that come through the governor's office that focus on these facility upgrades, which is the Community Resilience Grant Program, the Transformative Climate Communities Grant Program, one of those grants went to the Cuayama Valley, as well as the Extreme Heat and Community Resilience Grant Program. So just noting that in order to be prepared for those grant programs, a facility needs a certain number of plans that have been drafted, and that's something that we can provide support for, which is a emergency communications plan, a energy resilience plan, and a mobility plan. These are all part of that operational, operations plan, as well as a year-long community resilience hub operations plan that just provides essentially like the maintenance plan for facilities and staffing plan. The other requirements to access state funding for resilience hubs is that those facilities need to be open and accessible to the public year-round. There are some tough requirements to meet here, including that 24/7 capability to provide shelter during times that it's activated by emergencies, or activated seven days a week during specific climate emergencies. This is something we're actively advocating on with the state. I'm currently the vice chair for the state's Climate Adaptation Working Group and chair of the Central Coast Climate Collaborative, and we're actively working directly with state agencies to amend some of these grant programs to help become more accessible for different types of resilience hubs. And so I kind of, you know, with all of that being said, I, you know, my general guidance to the city council and for the community members here is that creating community resilience and to the existing climate realities that we face in our region, especially here with the pre-existing heat waves and the definite reality that it's going to continue and the duration is going to continue and the health impacts will continue, as well as the exasperated severe impacts of wildfire and other types of disasters, means that now more than ever, especially as state and national funding is up and down and dynamic, we need to ensure that our communities are reducing the distance it takes for them to get the resources they need to be self-reliant and be self-resilient no matter what happens. And that creates that opportunity for further investment and quality-of-life improvements in our communities, and it's one of those essential things that we can do together. So resilience hubs offers one of those types of solutions, and it's been very popular across the state. And it's not the only one, right? It's also paired with important mutual aid programming and other social resilience supports for grassroots local leaders who are doing the work on the ground every day to connect with their neighbors. This is one of those options that specifically has to do with facility improvements. So just making that note, I have such appreciation for the groups that have presented today and the groups that will be presenting later and the topics that you all are considering today. And I just am happy to be a resource to you for whatever you need and connect you to any of the programs I mentioned today. Thank you.
Other questions from the council members?
Not a question, but a related comment. I was going to do this as part of my report later, but it's relevant to this. If there's anyone who's listening or in the community who's interested in learning more about the human health impacts of extreme heat, we had an amazing presentation on it at my Energy and Environment Committee for the Southern California Association of Governments. It's a little tricky to find the video, but if you contact me, I can, it's in their Granicus, which doesn't interface well with their website. But I did find the video, so if anyone is interested in watching that, it was a really informative video. One of the quotes that they said was that "extreme heat events cause more deaths annually in the United States than all other extreme weather events combined." So there was, there was really good information in there about the events and about planning for the events. So if anyone has interest, I would be happy to pass along that link.
And I'll just add on to that and say, Santa Paula is in a census tract that's 60% higher in terms of extreme heat duration and impact than the rest of the census tracts in the state of California. And there is, good news there, is that there is the development of a county-wide comprehensive heat adaptation plan, which will allow for multiple opportunities for community members to self-identify multiple solutions in the city as well, that we can help support and finance through various mechanisms. And our goal is that this plan is more of an active financing, let's get stuff done plan more than anything else. So thank you for highlighting that.
Mr. Senior, can we follow up and have a meeting about this to see what process other cities have taken to address some of these concerns?
We can. We're also at the tail end of our own microgrid application with Southern Cal Edison. We've been selected to move forward, and we're hoping that that happens, which will be a huge boost for us, and especially at the community center where we have our cooling shelter, our emergency shelter. We've just done lighting retrofitting at that facility and backup generators and stuff. But yeah, we'd be happy to connect and see what else we can be doing.
That would be great. And the last thing I'll mention there is that we would love to ensure that groups like the community center, who are already acting in so much of the capacity of resilience hubs, that we start to identify them that way, to connect them to the network of community resilience hubs receiving support across the county. And so if there's other facilities that you have that you know these are resilience hubs in our community, I would love to be aware of them so that I can make sure that they're included as more resources and networks are developed.
Great.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite the following two people to speak on this issue. We got Marcos, come on up, and Sitlali. And then just for the audience's information, I know that several of you are here for item 11A. I'm going to move to 11A next to accommodate those folks that are here, and we'll finish up the rest of the business afterwards. All right, Marcos.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. My name is Marcos. I'm a Santa Paula High School senior and part of CAWS. And I just want to thank Mayor Chavez, Councilmember Crossway, and City Manager Dan Singer for placing the CEC presentation on the agenda for prioritizing learning on, prioritizing learning about how our community can have the resources needed to live safely and sustainably in harmony with our environment. I just want to say, obviously many of you are up there right now, and you were chosen to represent our city. And to help your city is the, to do the best thing you could possibly, possibly do. So when I describe what I have seen in the city, I really encourage you to take action and have a big heart to do something, because the position you are in is not just to help you, but to help us. So my first ask is to please support the creation of a resilience hub, partner with youth, local organizations, and service providers to ensure Santa Paula is prepared for extreme weather events, a space where families, youth, and Spanish-speaking residents can stay safe during extreme heat and harsh rainy conditions. The good thing is that we already have organizations that are ready to help and support this. We don't need to start from zero. We just need you, the city, to partner with us and move this forward, because we need more spaces that can provide space, heating, cooling, activities, and support residents throughout the community. My second ask is to work more closely with school district. Students experience these climate and school environmental issues every day, and we should be able to give input without restrictions. Right now, if a student wants to give input to the school, to the school board, they need a teacher or a school official to recommend them, which is very unusual and honestly unfair. Students should not need permission to speak about problems that affect them directly. And I speak for those students who walk home in extreme heat. We deal with floodings, and our families rely on schools for our safety. So please collaborate with the district to identify ways schools can support local climate and resilient efforts and make sure that student voices are actually included. And also have outside organizations support them, whether that's giving tools, resources, or presentations about climate change in our own communities. My third ask is to create a youth climate advisory committee. Young people deserve a real seat at the table. We understand what's happening in our neighborhoods, and we want to be a part of that decision-making. A youth committee would allow us to help shape, shape solutions and make sure our voices are included from the beginning. We need to be able to have a different pair of eyes and ears that can help see and hear what you can't. And my final ask is to give community more input and real decision-making power in all climate planning. Families, youths, Spanish-speaking households, and frontline neighborhoods need meaningful chances to share their experiences. Community engagement should be a core part of any climate or resilience plan, not something that happens in the very end. Santa Paula is already experiencing climate impacts, extreme heat every summer, flooding during heavy rains, and wildfires that have affected our neighborhoods. Our community needs safe, accessible, and resilient spaces, and we need the planning to actually include the people who live through these challenges, not you, the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcos. Just for clarification, Marcos, you mentioned something real quick in what you just said about not being allowed to speak regarding issues. Can you just repeat that statement?
So we had a meeting with one of the school board directors, I believe, trustees, and he said that we can't give input as long as we're referred or recommended by a teacher or a school official.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for sharing that, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Well, we'll follow up on that. Thank you for bringing that up. Sitlali.
Good evening, or night, everyone. My name is Sitlali. I'm the Santa Paula CAWS organizer, and I just want to remind everyone, like, we need to prepare for extreme weather, especially with the recent heavy rainfall we got, and considering our history and experiences with heat waves, wildfires, flooding, and high winds. As these circumstances become more common, it's clear that our city needs a strong climate action plan to guide us forward. We recently learned that the Blanchard Library is equipped to be our city's cooling center, and through the Community Environmental Council's Resilience Hub Accelerator Program, we've learned that local places and community spaces can have the support in becoming resilience hubs. These could be places where people can cool down, charge devices during outages, have access to water, shades, and resources in Spanish, English. And this, these spaces would or could support community members during, during emergencies, like the power outages that affected families near Las Piedras Park and the Oaks earlier this year, or during other emergencies. I also want to thank Mayor Chavez and Councilmember Crossway for bringing the CEC presentation forward tonight. This is the direction Santa Paula needs to be moving in, and it matters that the city is taking this conversation seriously. As we look ahead, we need the city to work closely with youth, local organizations, and other partners to create a resilience hub that truly meets community needs. We also need stronger collaboration with the school district, since schools play a major role during heat days, emergencies, and times when families are most vulnerable. And it's important that young people who are already leaning on climate issues have a real voice in shaping these solutions through a youth climate advisory committee. More than anything, we're asking for meaningful community input as the city develops its climate and resilience priorities. Frontline neighborhoods, Spanish-speaking families, working parents, elders, and youth must be part of the planning process from the very beginning, including climate and resilience goals in the city's strategic plan, and committing to a comprehensive climate action plan are key steps that will make sure we're not just reacting to crises, but preparing for them. Santa Paula has the capacity, partners, and community leadership to build something strong. So we really deserve safety, preparedness, and the peace of mind that comes from knowing there's, there are places to turn during extreme weather. Thank you.
Thank you, Sitlali. All right, we're going to jump over to 11A to accommodate the public. And I believe Gloria Para will be presenting to us.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before we do that, can I just ask whether the council has anything that, well, there's only one consent item, but whether or not there's going to be any questions or wanting to pull that, so I can...
11A is about, I'm sorry, 10A is about the purchase of the F-150, the F-550 stake bed truck. Are there any concerns regarding that?
No.
Seeing none, since it's only one item, shall we just...
I would move approval of the consent calendar.
Okay, approval made.
I would second.
Second?
I would second that, Mayor.
Second, all of them favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, make the purchase, sir.
Thank you for that. I just wanted to let our public works director go if he...
I see them in the back over there.
He should just know.
Make sure we put a sticker on that truck.
They'll only be near since...
Thank you again. All right, so we're moving to 11A. Ms. Para.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Gloria, and I'm here to offer recommendations to the city council on behalf of the Ad Hoc Committee on Immigration regarding the allocation of surplus budget funds of $50,000. But before giving that recommendation, I'd like to give a bit of context, a bit of background to how they got to where they are now. So at the city council meeting on September 3rd, the city council established this ad hoc committee consisting of council members Jenny Crossway and Gabby Ornalas to evaluate how the city could best support Santa Paula's immigrant community, while also deciding how to promote access to local, county, and regional resources. And at the last meeting, council directed the committee to identify effective uses of it. So since conception of this ad hoc committee, they have conducted outreach with nonprofit organizations, regional agencies, and key stakeholders in the community to understand existing service networks and to identify the city's most impactful local role. And as we know, most recently, this was the longest federal shutdown in U.S. history. There was a delayed SNAP benefits to approximately 77,000 Ventura County residents, and this underscored how this committee's recommendation was made even more challenging. County... County agencies and community partners were reporting an elevated demand for food. And like a chain reaction, there was also an elevated demand to rent and utility assistance and other wraparound supports. So now, the committee identified two main groups or main types of organizations that both serve our community in advocacy and support. The first main type are groups who meet immediate needs. The first one listed is the Ventura County Community Foundation, VCCF, and their Neighbor Support Fund, which we will hear more from Mike in the presentation to follow. But to give a bit of context as to how local cities have helped support this fund, the City of Thousand Oaks and the City of Ventura made a monetary one-time donation to this fund, and also the City of Camarillo and City of Fillmore, they supported endorsing this fund. And however, they made their own separate donations to their own local food shares in their community, and these actions were taken back in August and September of 2025. Moving on to other organizations that meet immediate needs are Poder Popular, which we heard throughout the other organizations as well. They offer food assistance, housing assistance, and also workshops such as schooling, tutoring, discussion groups, and leadership training. Another organization to highlight is the 805 Undocu Fund. These also address urgent financial needs such as rent and utility bills, and they also provide transportation to relevant immigration or legal proceedings. Now, moving on to the second main type of organization identified are the ones who provide legal assistance and support to immigrant and mixed-status families. The first one listed is the Immigrant Legal Defense Center. They focus on helping youth under 21 arrange their papers so that they don't fall into deportation hearings. And also, another legal aid organization is Mariposa, and they equip youth to become advocates and local leaders in their community. Considering these two distinct types of organizations and nonprofits, the ones who provide immediate help and the other ones who provide legal aid, the committee recommends to divide the $50,000 as follows. $30,000 would be to address immediate needs, split evenly between VCCF, Poder Popular, and 805 Undocu Fund. The remaining $20,000 to be then distributed amongst legal aid organizations, and the committee will continue to research these organizations. Alternatively, all or a portion of the funds could be distributed based on a more formal Notice of Funding Availability process, which would involve other criteria. And lastly, as a note, if council so chooses, to consider an additional monetary placeholder from current fiscal year's surplus for emerging needs as they may appear throughout the year. Thank you.
All right, we're going to open to the public for comments. Thank you so much, Ms. Para. This is your first time presenting, so thank you. Great job. And we're going to start with Joseph Dobinsky.
And Mr. Mayor, we do have a representative from the Ventura County Community Foundation with a brief presentation. So at any time, if you want to hear from the public and then...
Let's hear from the public first, and then we'll go after. Joseph Dobinsky, welcome back.
Hello again. My name is Joseph Dobinsky Jr., and I am coming to you at public comment in my role as the 805 Rapid Response Organizer for 805 Undocu Fund. Back in 2018, 805 Undocu Fund was started in response to the Thomas Fire, because those who are undocumented were not eligible to receive funding to get through those tough times. And so we started gathering funds and distributing them to people as they needed them. We've also done outreach and funding to help folks during the COVID-19 epidemic that took place and is still kind of happening right now. In 2025, we took over as the Rapid Response Organization from CAUZ in this area, and we've expanded to kind of have three pillars of what we do. One is rapid response in response to ICE sightings and ICE abductions and how to help out those families in need. That includes patrolling neighborhoods and making sure that we document everything that's happening. The second is community outreach. That's everything from tabling about what we do to going out into communities and organizing folks in those areas, and also coming to places like this and talking to you all. And then finally, we have a huge component now for mutual aid. This was born out of our Emergency Assistance Fund that was developed for folks who are facing some sort of hardship because of an ICE abduction. In Santa Paula, we've already given $10,000 to 10 families, $1,000 each, just want to make that clear. And it's more important now than ever. We both need mitigation and prevention when it comes to funding that's given there. For mitigation, we have our Emergency Assistance Fund. Every dollar that goes into the Emergency Assistance Fund goes back out to a family. We don't take any percentage off the top. We don't take anything for ourselves with that. We make sure it goes there. And we also mitigate through our Rapid Response Networks that are volunteer-based. In terms of prevention, we work with legal support that are out there so that both attorneys who are skilled in immigration law and also accredited representatives, which is often a cheaper but just as effective way of advocating for undocumented folks through the legal process, the torturous legal process, are also things that were there. Please pass this item, and if you have any extra funds, we'll gladly take them. Make sure they get to the families. The families know best how to spend that money, and it'll go right back into your economy here in Santa Paula. So that's there. Santa Paula owes this to the immigrant community. They're your past, your present, and your future. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We have Ms. Mary Ann Krausy. Did Mary Ann...
Not Mary Ann.
Okay, all right. We're going to invite... There we go, Ms. Constance Leschin. Come on down.
Good evening. I'm Constance Leschin, and I'm going to speak very briefly tonight. You're being asked to decide who, what organization is going to be getting $50,000 or how it's going to be split up. And what I want to emphasize to you tonight is that Poder Popular is the only organization that is located in Santa Paula and serves Santa Paula. And that's what I'd like you to keep in mind tonight when you decide where this money is going to go. I'm sure you all know a great deal about Poder Popular and Maria Jimenez and Dr. Grabino Aguirre. I meet there every Tuesday with a group of people, and it's something that we call Hearts Without Borders. And I see what's being done. And my husband works at the food bank every Thursday. 400 families were served, I think, last week, up from 250 a couple weeks before. There is a huge need here, huge. And so I'm asking you to please keep the money here strictly in Santa Paula, and please fund Poder Popular. Thank you.
We have Nidia Bejo.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nidia, policy advocate with CAUZ. Thank you for listening to your residents and for responding with urgency to the recent increase in detentions and kidnappings by ICE, an agency with a long record of documented human rights abuses. We have all witnessed the devastating impacts these inhumane federal enforcement operations have on families, children, workers, and our neighbors, and the sudden violent and traumatic separation of a parent or family member. It destabilizes entire households. When a parent or head of household is taken, families lose their income overnight. They are immediately forced to figure out how to continue paying for rent, groceries, transportation, and childcare, while also facing costly legal fees and expenses tied to detention. These are costs most families simply can't afford. Ventura County, especially Santa Clara Valley, has extremely limited assistance available. And that's why it's critical that the county, sorry, that the city support the organizations currently filling the gaps and responding directly to the urgent needs of our immigrant community, a community that is essential to the social and economic well-being of the county and the city. We're grateful that the Ad Hoc Committee has allocated $50,000 from unused budget funds. This is an important and necessary first step, but the need is far greater. We urge you to identify and allocate additional funding to establish organizations in the city and the county that are providing emergency basic need support and legal aid, legal aid that can go a long way. We strongly support the recommendation to invest directly in key organizations that are already doing the work on the ground. Direct funding ensures the fastest, most effective response to the humanitarian crisis that families are facing right now. Legal aid in particular is not only humanitarian assistance, it is often the difference between someone having a fair chance in court or being denied due process entirely. You have demonstrated leadership by listening to the community and recognizing the urgency of this moment. Now, we ask you to continue that leadership by expanding funding for basic humanitarian assistance and legal support. Our immigrant community deserves safety, stability, and a fair opportunity to defend their basic human rights. And the organizations serving them need the resources to meet this moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Nidia. Jennifer Hernandez.
Good evening, Mayor Chavez and councilmembers. My name is Jennifer Hernandez. I'm the Associate Policy Director at CAUZ. I'd first like to acknowledge the efforts of this council to create the Ad Hoc Committee on Immigration. And we'd like to appreciate Councilmembers Crosswhite and Ornalas for serving on this committee and for meeting with CAUZ staff and leaders and with representatives from local community-serving organizations to learn more about the community's immediate needs and how to best respond to them. As you know, immigrant families in Santa Paula and throughout the county are under attack. They're being targeted in their homes, in their cars, at work, and on the street. And when a breadwinner or caretaker is detained or deported, families can suddenly lose access to food, education, housing, and stability. The violence of these separations causes lasting trauma, especially for children whose parents are suddenly taken away, sometimes right in front of them. As a result of this, people are avoiding schools, clinics, work, grocery stores, out of fear, even though these places are essential for their well-being. Families need support in the form of food, funds, rent, from trusted community resources. Families need access to legal help so that people who qualify for immigration relief can get it before they're targeted, before a parent is taken from home. Humanitarian aid, such as that provided here locally by 805 Undocu Fund and Poder Popular, makes it so that families can make it through another week with food on the table and rent paid. Legal aid makes it far more likely that a family's breadwinner can stay with their family so children don't lose a parent and households don't lose the income they depend on. And many families impacted by enforcement are left with no resources, no guidance, no way to respond when they're affected by this violence. This is why we support the committee's recommendation. $50,000 is a small but mighty investment that will immediately support families impacted by this humanitarian crisis. CAUZ, along with the 805 Undocu Fund, the Immigrant Legal Defense Center, the 805 Immigrant Coalition, and others, ask that the council collaborate with local community organizations. Working directly with the groups that have longstanding relationships is important. These organizations have the trust, cultural competency, and the infrastructure needed to respond quickly and effectively. We ask that you allocate additional funding for legal assistance organizations and allocate additional unused city funds to meet basic needs. We ask that the city support family preparedness planning and invest in community education, workshops, and resources that help families create concrete preparedness plans. And we ask that the community support the county's efforts to create a removal defense fund. We urge the city to support these efforts so that the Public Defender's Office can represent residents facing deportation or detention. Thank you.
Thank you. Luz. Bienvenida. Habla directamente al microfono, eh? We need a translator.
Translator, can you come out?
Translator, can you come out?
Buenas noches, señor alcalde y miembros del consejo. Soy Luz Gómez.
Good evening, mayor and members of the committee.
Gracias por considerar e invertir en nuestra comunidad.
Thank you for investing and considering in our community.
Sé que muchas organizaciones necesitan apoyo, pero hoy quiero compartir una experiencia y explicar por qué es importante financiar organizaciones como Poder Popular.
I know many organizations need a support, but today I want to share my experience and explain why it is important to finance organizations like Poder Popular.
El mes pasado, me enfrenté algo muy difícil. Me pidieron desalojar el RV que estaba rentando.
Last month, I faced something very difficult. They asked for me to evacuate the RV where I was renting.
Soy trabajadora del campo y madre de dos niños pequeños.
I'm a field worker and a mother of two small kids.
Y como ustedes saben, en Santa Paula casi no hay vivienda accesible, y no sabía qué hacer ni a dónde acudir.
And like you know, here in Santa Paula, there's not accessible homes, and I did not know where to go.
Me comuniqué con una voluntaria de Poder Popular, y ese mismo día me ayudaron a conseguir un hotel para mi familia.
I reached out to a volunteer at Poder Popular, and that same day, they helped me to find a hotel for my family.
Conectándome con otras organizaciones que cubrieran los gastos.
Connecting with other organizations to cover the costs.
Esto me dio tiempo para buscar un lugar estable.
This gave me time to look for a stable place.
Encontré un apartamento de una habitación aquí en Santa Paula, y Poder Popular también me ayudó con parte de los gastos iniciales.
I found an apartment with one bedroom here in Santa Paula. And Poder Popular also helped me to share costs.
Mientras estuve sin vivienda, me dieron despensas y artículos para mis hijos.
While I was with no home, they gave me food and articles for my kids.
También me conectaron con grupos confiables que ahora me están apoyando y con organizaciones que ayudan a trabajadores del campo a encontrar viviendas accesibles.
They also connected me with trustworthy groups that today they're supporting me with organizations that are helping me and workers of the field to find accessible homes.
Todo esto fue posible por el trabajo, las conexiones, y la dedicación de Poder Popular.
All this was with the effort and work and the connections and the dedication of Poder Popular.
Ellos apoyan a muchas familias y brindan ayuda humanitaria a quienes lo necesitan.
They help a lot of families and give humanitarian help to those who need it.
Gracias por considerar y escuchar y en considerar apoyar a organizaciones como Poder Popular.
And thank you for listening and for considering to support organizations like Poder Popular.
Gracias, Luz. Thank you. We have Nicole. I'm sorry, Zolet. And then followed by Nicole.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. Thank you for considering the recommendations from the Ad Hoc Immigration Committee. This is an important step forward supporting the most vulnerable families in our community. As you know, many families are facing economic hardship, and some are being targeted in humane ways under new immigration enforcement policies.
...with allocating like additional funds, supporting family preparedness planning, and the support of the County Removal Defense Fund, to just name a few things. The need for aid, both humanitarian and legal, is immense. And VC Defensa, the majority of the funds that we raise go directly to families affected by deportations, and there are so many other organizations out there doing this amazing work, and it's great that they're all available to help and, you know, put that work in. And, oh my gosh, I lost my smile, sorry. It's so great that so many people and organizations are available to help, but we need to show people that locally, they are supported and we will fight for them. People are scared, they're scared to leave their house, and they're worried about how they will pay for their rent and feed their families, and though we can't fully ease their fears, we can ease the burden of, you know, paying the bills, the rent, the food costs, and the legal costs. Legal aid is especially necessary now. Families are experiencing an added expense while also risking losing the main breadwinner of their family, and having a legal fund can ease that burden for families and keep them together. Currently, our area has limited resources for immigration lawyers, and they are forced to travel outside the county, or if they do find a local attorney, they are paying larger legal fees. So establishing funds for legal aid can bring in much-needed assistance for families throughout our city. Thank you again for creating this committee and listening to the people. I hope that you can recognize how important this support is for the community, and we will see real material support for the families impacted by the deportations occurring in our county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to invite the Ventura County Community Foundation.
Good evening, Anyan Harshamika. Sorry, my kids were in taekwondo. I'm Mike Soulay, I'm Vice President of Ventura County Community Foundation. I'm here to talk about the Ventura County Neighbor Support Fund. When we launched this fund about twelve, fourteen weeks ago, we realized very quickly that we needed to change its name to the Neighbor Support Coalition, because not everyone was donating to the fund, but people wanted to be part of something that was incredibly important to this particular community and to the issues that we're talking about tonight. I want to thank the City Council Ad Hoc Committee on Immigration for the time that they spent with us, because what our mission is for this particular coalition is that everyone in Ventura County is seen, supported, and safe. So if we go to the next slide, you've already heard, and you know this, you're living it every single day in terms of what it is that we're doing through this fund. This is for immediate relief only, it is humanitarian, this is not the Legal Defense Fund. If we were talking about that, we would be talking about something separate from the Neighbor Support Fund. I want to be clear about the fact that this is not about politics, this is about people. This is just about recognizing and seeing the neighbors that we have and making sure that we can help support them, because it's not just the immigrant community, it is all of us. We are all interconnected in one big community of neighbors. One of the pieces that is also important to you, for you to know, is that we are taking absolutely zero overhead on everything that comes in. So I want to be clear, we are not in competition with anyone, everything is a pass-through to the organizations that we work with. So if we go to the next slide, what you'll see is the Coalition of Partners, pretty uncontroversial in terms of who's there. One of the logos that's missing is the City of Santa Paula, we would love to have that joining us up there on that city, on this map of folks that go along with foundations, community foundations, private organizations, community banks, the City of Thousand Oaks, the county, as well as Santa Paula Latino Town Hall, and you can see the rest that are there. Coming together as a coalition again to say, this is critically important that we all stand up together and say, we want to support the neighbors that we have here. It is economic, it is about the schools, and it is about the cities and the citizens that we have. So if you go to the next slide, what you'll see are the grantees that we have given out to date, and that number is wrong, and I apologize for that, that's how much had been raised at that point. We've given out to date three hundred and nine thousand dollars to the following organizations that you see up there. We'll be granting out a fourth round of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars Friday, and so a number of other organizations will be joining. We have a committee of folks from the community who review the applications that come in, and again, everything that's coming in is all about immediate relief and things that have impact, not about building long-term capacity for an organization, it's about getting the dollars out to people as quickly as possible. So to date, we've raised over five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, which we're very, very thrilled about, and you can see the group that's there that's sort of knitting the fabric of the communities that we have. One of the other pieces that becomes important about the grantees as well as the partners is that we bring them together as a coalition so that we can share best practice with each other, so that we can build communities so that we are thinking about how we support people who may live in Santa Paula, but they work in Ventura. And so how does all of that work together? And so working with the, these organizations has just been absolutely incredible for us in terms of putting this coalition together. And I think that may be it. How about that? Questions? See, I was fast.
I might, I might just jump in, Mike, to, to point out, especially since there's so many supporters here of Poder Popular, that Lucha is their nonprofit support network. So you see monies that are going to Lucha, those are trickling down to Poder. I just wanted to-
Thank you, Dan.
-make that clear.
That was actually my question, which was my question for an earlier presenter, not on this subject of the community action, is how do we know that the funds are going to Santa Paula? If the, if the funds are coming here, that, that if we contribute, that we see the benefit in our city?
It's a great question. I don't know. And I mean that in the sense of, you know, you work in the community, so you know that when dollars go out, as I said, we have, we've had this conversation with every city council that have been here. We are interested in funding folks who are local, you're able to designate that, right? The group that we were just talking about, Lucha, can be designated, and all of those dollars are going to go right there, but when dollars go to food share, if that were something that you wanted to designate it to, people are coming in from all over the county, right? Yeah.
Great. Other questions? No? We're good? All right, we're going to go ahead and deliberate at the moment.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I'm going to invite the council members who were part of the Ad Hoc Committee to just share anything additional, if you have questions or additional comments regarding what's on before us.
Would you like to start, Councilmember Ornells? I don't even know where to start. I want to thank everybody who came to speak and everyone who met with us or texted me. I've been getting texts now while I'm sitting up here. We, as a council, I think it's very clear, understand the need and the urgency for getting the funds out, and so a recommendation that we, that is here before you all, is the fifty thousand that we earmarked at our last council meeting, of course, that can, that amount can be upped. Like some of you who came up during public comment said, this is a good starting point, that's what we're looking at it as, and this is where there's space for the conversation. The immediate needs is what we're, we're recommending we put the most money towards, and one thing that we heard at the last meeting that we had, listening meeting we had, was the importance of supporting legal aid, because some of the people that have been detained are reaching the age limit where they won't be able to do anything about their status. And it was very interesting for me to hear what that cutoff is and why, and what work needs to be done to avoid them from reaching that age, where there's nothing that could be done but them being deported. So that's why we've recommended to allocate funds, but continue to do the research, the work in researching the different groups that are doing that. There was the County Removal Defense Fund that was brought up. I don't think I personally have enough to say this is where all of the funds are going for legal aid, but I welcome the conversation from council. The second option here is going through the Notice of Funding Availability Process, which would be like an application and what the criteria would be, and we just felt that the urgency of getting money out now is something that we would prefer to do, but the legal aid piece still needs work, and unfortunately, we don't have that ready now. But the humanitarian piece is what we want to, to get funding out for, so we're bringing it to the rest of council tonight to ask for your input on the recommendation and to give us feedback or for us to all discuss, do you want to increase the funding, do you want to go with the second, like where is everybody, where does everyone stand after hearing, and maybe people have approached you through the process, as a council member or as mayor, on what your take is on, on what we should do as a council with what we have in front of us, really, I don't, I wish we had all the money to do all of it, but this is where we're at, this is what we have right now, and yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Crossway.
I have some comments that we can get to later, but one of, some other things that I want to share with you all, they're not in your report, but things that we heard. We heard a lot of heartbreaking stories, and I want to be careful not to, you know, reveal anything, but I'm going to, I'm going to try to share a little bit, just so you can get the essence of part of some of the things that we heard. You know, we heard about instances where there were families where they were in a process, and then, you know, one person was removed, even though they were in a process, even though they had an attorney, and they were separated from their children for an extended period of time. By the time they were able to be reunited with their children, you know, their children thought that they had been abandoned, they were young enough that they didn't understand where their parent had been, you know, for several weeks. We heard stories of instances where, you know, the parents would, it used to be that both parents in the family would work, and now they were taking turns working so that there would always be one person at home in the household in case something happened. We heard stories of, well, which also then leads to a decrease in the overall, overall income for the households. We heard stories of folks who have developed a fear of anyone in a uniform because of the way that some of the enforcement activities have recently been carried out. We, you know, were reminded over and over again that a lot of these households are mixed status families, and so, and sometimes it's, it's the breadwinner that may not have all of the documents, and then if that person gets picked up, that puts the rest of the family at risk of becoming homeless. Even if the rest of the family are all citizens, there's at least a time of transition of, oh, now, you know, you've got to sort of scramble to figure out what to do. We even heard stories of parents who are learning to give their kids haircuts, even if they're, they're, whether they have documents or not, there's a level of fear that exists in a different way that didn't previously. We heard stories of some, that some individuals will be released pretty quickly, where others will be moved time and again and again, sometimes across the country, to different facilities, and then others who had been deported within a handful of days. We heard stories of families who had decided to separate their families, and some would self-deport, and that would then leave citizen children in the care of other family members so that they could stay here because they were citizens and go, finish their education, but that was leading to family separation. Then also, as you heard in the public comments, we heard about how, you know, some of the changes to things like the USDA food program, the federal program, had led, 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 had meant that there was reductions in some of the food that was available at some of the pantries, and as you also heard in public comment, there has been some increase in, in families coming and needing support with food and other things. And then we also heard about the impact that the coverage and the enforcement activities have had on the youth in our schools, and, and just the, you know, documented or not, the, the impact that those young people in our community were having, and mental health was already something that was a big issue, that would come up every time our youth in the, in the schools were surveyed, and it's, it's continuing to come up and, and they're continuing to be impacted. So I just wanted to share, you had requested at the last meeting that we share some of what we had heard, and so I just, I mean, that's just a, we, we had a lot, we had, I don't know how many meetings at this point with different folks and conversations that we've both had together and individually about this topic, and so that's just sort of a, a little bit of a snapshot of some of the stories that we've heard over the last, what, two months or however long it's been since we set up the committee.
Questions, councilmembers?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I want to thank Councilmember Crossway and Councilmember Ornells for stepping up and being part of this Ad Hoc Committee. There's no doubt you probably took some of these stories home with you at night, maybe some sleepless nights. Hearing the comments tonight and reading the report, I mean, it's, having to take this money and trying to decipher how much you're going to distribute or recommend, and then even then, it may not be enough, but it's, it's definitely a good start. The thirty thousand initially to VCCF, Poder Popular, and 805-UndocuFund, and then the other twenty thousand used towards the other legal aid, and that's where my question is. In the staff report, it talks about for 805-UndocuFund, it talks about other urgent expenses directly connected to the family's safety and well-being, including legal fees. That might be where the question is, is that enough? Because under Immigrant Legal Defense Center, they operate under, under 501(c)(3), and they actually incorporate attorneys that use pro bono legal services. But there's definitely legal services involved in it, and as you know, if you involve any kind of litigation or attorneys, that money's going to go really fast. So I guess the question is, have we learned how much of this is actually going to be absorbed by attorneys that work in there? Because as I said, that, that could go, go away really quick, so.
For the 805-UndocuFund?
Either one of those. I mean, because it also talks about legal fees under the 805-UndocuFund and the other twenty thousand for the immigrant legal defense. DocuFund and, uh, the other 20,000 for the Immigrant Legal Defense Center.
Just a general question, if you heard, if they have attorneys in.
So my understanding of what we're, we're talking about for the, those three organizations is that we would be assisting them on the humanitarian side with those three organizations. Um, if the council was inclined to have us continue to research the, um, legal aid. And, and part of what we heard, I, I think we went into this thinking that we would focus on humanitarian aid and the part of why we're bringing back to you a conversation around whether or not you want to consider, um, the legal aid was that it became clear in our conversations from the community, um, that they felt really strongly that the humanitarian aid helps you for today. And that the legal aid is something that, that helps, um, an individual become stable, become more economically productive, um, and be able to then eventually be able to support themselves and their families. And so, um, like the Immigrant Legal Defense Center, we just talked to them, um, right before our staff report was due. And so we just, we don't have all of the answers. That's why if the council is willing to consider us continuing to look into that, we would come back. Um, we would have, do more investigation. We would see, I mean, part of the challenge with the Calen, County Fund is it still doesn't exist. So were it to exist before we come back, we could consider bringing that as a recommendation right now because it doesn't. Um, we were going the other route of looking at, um, the two organ, nonprofit organizations, um, that serve individuals in our county. Um, the Immigrant Legal Defense Center focuses on youth, uh, under the age of 21 who are already eligible for, um, legal status. So it's not, they're, they're not focusing on, um, the rest of the population of folks. They're looking at who are the children who are, and I don't remember all of the things because again, we just had this conversation, um, but who are eligible for, um, either unprotected minor status or there's another, but they're, they're children who are already eligible to, um, go, to start a process. And so those are the, the children and youth that they are working with and focusing on. Um, and then, so we, we met with one of their executive directors and we also met with Vanessa Frank, who is with the, um, Mariposa. But again, we are just starting to understand all of the dynamics of that. And we would really need to come back to you, uh, with more information. Um, but we wanted to get a temperature since that wasn't something that we had specifically talked about as a council. Um, we really wanted to find out more from all of you, um, before we, cause we would, we would not have been able to get all of that information together. Um, by that, we had a staff report that was due last Thursday and the city servers were down. And that made it, just getting this up to you at all, uh, made it quite challenging. Um, and so we just didn't, we, we had two days all ready to pull it all together. And so we didn't have time to finalize the, those other recommendations, um, but wanted to see if that was something that you all were amenable to us continuing to explore. So we're, we're putting it to you all.
All right. Yeah. Well, thank you, Councilmember Crossway. And definitely the humanitarian need exists and there's no doubt that the legal fees and ramifications are looming out there. And I would, uh, support if, if we had the money to, um, possibly increase the allocation. Thank you.
Couple of questions and a bunch of comments. First of all, I, I thank my fellow council members for the work on this and meeting and reaching out to community and as well the work done by Gloria. She's still here for the, as a fellow, she's gone, but appreciate that and her presentation. Um, not in any order of importance. My first question is, if we're recommending to Poder Popular, should that go to Lucha and what's the difference?
So at this point, um, Poder Popular is actually working on finalizing their own nonprofit status paperwork. There was a little thing called a government shutdown. And so that has impacted their paperwork's process of moving along. So it would likely be, uh, allocated to Lucha on behalf of, so it would be directed to, uh, through them.
Okay. So that was, I wanted that clarification. So what's the difference between the two? And I think we would be safer and better protected if we are giving it to an already existing nonprofit. So therefore I would recommend that it go to Lucha, having just learned about that today. Um, when we were discussing this early on, um, my comment was, um, that first of all, I am in favor of the 50,000. That's, there's no doubt. Uh, the allocation, I, I, I may wish to fine tune it if, if the, um, fellow councilmembers are willing. Um, I, I feel, um, well, first, before I say that, um, my question, my other question was how can we, um, help with the utilities, uh, electricity and that sort of thing? And the response was that's just too cumbersome for our council and our city to take on. That was a response from our, um, financial director. Um, but now we've learned today about community action, Ventura, that can do that. And so I, I think that's, that's a need and you can get your power shut off, shut off in the wintertime and that's an immediate need. Um, I'm, I'm sensing and understanding that there is a, a need for that immediate relief. And I would actually prefer that we spend the entire 50,000 this evening and authorize that in immediate relief. Um, we can investigate legal defense in the future, but I'm less willing to authorize or vote for that, um, because I think that we need to work on the humanitarian need of our heating, shelter, um, food. Um, and there's, it seems like a lot of money, but it's, it's not a lot of money when you think about the need. And I, so I would, I would prefer to see that. Um, I also, probably would not advocate for the 805 on DocuFund because they're based in Santa Barbara. And I don't know that we would get the reporting that I wish that we would have, that, uh, community action does as far as the dollars spent in our community, um, and that sort of thing. So I, I would be more, and forgive me for fine tuning at this because I appreciate the work, but this is, this would be my approach, open for debate, that we spend the full 50. Um, we support the Neighbor Support Fund in partnership with our, with our county members. Um, we could designate those funds to Lucha, I understand, which would help Poder Popular. That would actually help them both. And I would even propose, um, a large amount with that split, 25, 30,000 to them. That makes it, that makes an impact. Um, and, and then we could debate whether it would go directly to Lucha or if we should go to the county fund. Um, and then I also was very impressed, uh, by the Community Action of Ventura County and the work that they do. And they're, they're well established and they provide very good documentation as to the funds spent. And, uh, so the, my recommendation would be that it would be a split between the, the, um, the county foundation, um, and/or Poder Popular and the Community Action, which was not one of the ones that was on your list, but I'd like it to be considered. So I, I know that just kind of throws a little bit of chaos into your recommendation, but, um, I would like us to spend the 50 on that immediate relief. And I think there's a need for it. So.
Okay. So we have some discussion to do to massage this, but, um, I think it's important the public knows that this council has the community's back and willing to make investments because this community, um, is built on immigrants and the impact of that community, uh, is great in this, for all of us. It's benefited all of us. So, um, there's just a couple of things. I think this is a good starting place. It's not the end all. And, um, when I did the mayor's roundtable, there's a lot of things that I've learned and heard from the community that I, I don't think are in here. So I want to make sure that as you continue your work, that it isn't just about obviously money, relief, it's important totally. But we also want to remind people that the city has been doing some things that are part of a comprehensive strategy to support our community. One of those things has been, and Ms. Castillo, I'm going to put you on the, uh, mic right now regarding the two legal cases that this city has joined in with the Amicus briefs. What are those two cases? Could you remind us, the public?
Yes. Uh, one of the cases, uh, was, uh, Newsom v., um, I think it was the Trump administration. Um, and, uh, that was, uh, Amicus, Amicus briefs to, uh, join in opposing the, uh, the use of National Guard, um, and using federal, uh, local forces, um, to enforce immigration law. Um, and then there was a second Amicus brief. Unfortunately, that has not gone forward, um, but we do have authorization to join when it does move forward. And that is also for, uh, similar, uh, arguments against, uh, federal involvement in local affairs.
And that was Perdomo, right?
Perdomo, correct.
Correct. So legal, obviously this city has made a statement by partnering up to fight injustice. Uh, we've partnered up with Know Your Rights. I know the chief of my staff were at, uh, Iglesia Our Lady of Guadalupe early on, and we were supporters of all the Know Your Rights forums. Our city has been promoting these forums to help inform our residents. So the city has been doing some advocacy that's, I think is important as part of this. Uh, there's some things that I haven't heard, which I think, uh, the committee can take back, uh, for further analysis and development. And those are, one of the things I heard from the community is that they want to hear a statement of some sort of where we stand. Um, that was very important. I kept hearing that. I said, well, you know, other cities have made a statement about what they stand for. And so even though these are important things, I think a statement at some point to be drafted should be part of this comprehensive strategy. Obviously we have a legislative platform. So are we adding this to our legislative platform regarding immigration so that we can continuously advocate when there's an injustice that comes before us? The other thing I kept hearing about is, is there emergency rental assistance for displaced families? Uh, connecting that, those resources through the city so that we can disseminate that information? Utility assistance, what a presentation we heard today, right? Because that's a wonderful partner for utility assistance. I kept hearing about assistance in family preparation planning. I think the city can play a role. Our neighbor in city was able to put a forum together where they were providing that assistance, making sure that red cards are available in our public spaces at the city facilities. Uh, our emergency response team or our emergency response strategy, this is key so that we don't run into a situation like what happened at Glass House. So if something might happen here, what do we do? Is it just the chief that's going to go out there and have a conversation? Or do we create a committee of ambassadors to be able to, uh, facilitate, um, the strategy that we put in place? For instance, how do we keep communication with our residents about what's happening? What is the emergency response going to look to that? Um, small businesses, I've been hearing from small businesses about a resilience fund of some sorts because there's several small businesses that are being impacted. Um, training for city employees. I know the city manager sent some communication out regarding some guidelines about how to, how to, how to train our city employees when dealing with ICE. And so these are just some things that I think are important to, uh, have a conversation about as you continue the work. Um, I am in favor of increasing the fund to $50,000. What I would say as a breakup in terms of a recommendation would be, um, obviously VCCF has taken a leadership role in distributing funds through a, through a formal grant making process. I like to see that, that investment is at 10,000, Poder Popular at 10,000. I know the work of the 805 DocuFund and they don't compete with what the local community is doing, but they do have a key role in this in terms of mobilization and support because they do have some residents because they have a footprint on the, in the online community that Poder Popular doesn't have. And you can look at Poder Popular, there's no website, there's no information, it's word of mouth. And that's, that's great, but there's also people that need, uh, accessibility and, and the 805 on DocuFund has that network. They have built that network. I like to see $10,000 from Food Share because the food comes from somewhere and it trickles down and we know that Food Share is a vital partner in distribution of food throughout the entire county. And then to, uh, Councilmember Cornejo's point, Community Action 10. So that'd be a total of $50,000 distributed for those five organizations that are key to supporting what's happening now in terms of urgent need. And then allow the committee to come back with some guidelines regarding what organizations could potentially benefit from, uh, legal assistance fund. Uh, one of the organizations that's key, I believe, um, unfortunately the county board of supervisors did not have the courage to do this, but maybe we can, is support the Public Defender's Office because that Public Defender's Office is here local and is accessible to the community. Whereas ILDC, they have to bring people here to the community. They're not local. They're based out of Santa Barbara. And so I'd like to explore potentially having conversations with the district attorneys, the Public Defender's Office to see what, uh, potential services are able to provide because they've been providing some, a lot of public information and there was a lot of useful resources. And it's, was accessible, was local, it was somewhere you can go to the government center and get those services on hand. And so those are just my thoughts and I appreciate the committee's work that you did because you had a short window of time. And I'm sure it's difficult with people's schedules and meeting with people and folks. And again, it didn't help that our city was shut down for a week with communication. So thank you both ladies for taking on this role and I appreciate, and I know we all appreciate your hard work. Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't turn off my mic. So I'm glad I didn't talk while I. Again, I would propose because 805 on DocuFund is in Santa Barbara and their stated mission is, uh, as, as a nonprofit is, uh, for strictly undocumented. We're, we would be a little bit venturing into the political arena, which I would prefer to stay on the compassionate, uh, relief side of these issues so that we don't put a target on our back inadvertently. Uh, I'm very protective of our city and of all of our people. And I'm afraid that sometimes, um, going forward with some of these statements may feel very good to the people that we're looking after. It may actually backfire. And so I, I just want us to take a little care of that and make sure that we're making, giving the funds to, for that immediate relief. Um, I would propose that we, we, uh, take the proposed 10 from the 805 on DocuFund and give it to Poder Popular through, through Lucha. Um, I will still support the motion, but I, I really think that we will get direct immediate care through Poder Popular and all those that we know here in town from that. Um, and I would prefer that that, those, those funds go directly to Poder, Poder Popular.
So before we get into the deliberation piece, I'd like to find common ground if, regarding the total allocation for just the moment, is there a consensus that 50,000 is a comfort level that would be emergent need now? Not saying what organizations yet, but is there that comfort level with 50,000?
Well, Mayor, I'd mentioned in my comments that I was comfortable with the 50, but if we had more, uh, available, I mean, I'd be open to that as well. And that's the only comment I have on that, on the, on the funding part.
That's always open. That's always going to be open. So if there's additional needs that come forward, I think it'd be good. We, we know it's there, right? But could we start with the base of 50? Is that?
Well, I'm comfortable with that. And, and if I can go ahead and just interject on what, uh, Councilmember Cornejo said, um, I start off my conversation by having some, some concern about legal fees. So I'm also kind of now leery about the 805 DocuFund, but I am, um, confident with the other suggestions that were made about the other organizations, especially, especially that of, uh, the local organization, Poder Popular and Lucha.
I'm good with the 50,000 going to the immediate humanitarian needs. Um, but just to touch on, um, what's being said, like 805 on DocuFund is out of Santa Barbara or, um, the money for VCCF is, you know, countywide. I don't know how I feel. I understand the work of Food I understand the work of Food Share, but if we're giving them 10,000, do we really have a guarantee that that 10,000 is going to come right back to Santa Paula? Or are we just putting it in the pot for everyone that they serve throughout the county?
Everything that we're allocating today will be with the disclosure that it supports Santa Paula because it's taxpayer money that's being used and should be reinvested into Santa Paula. Are we all in agreement of that?
Well, that's why I'm sharing my concern with that. Would those agencies that are not in Santa Paula guarantee us that that money is going to come right back to Santa Paula?
It would have to be earmarked. So, we would have to basically state that any funds that are distributed through this allocation be designated for working families in Santa Paula. So, I would recommend that we say that so that they know, hey, if we give you 10,000, it has to be coming back to the residents here. We are the most disadvantaged part of the county.
So, just, Mayor, just an argument for thought, and that is, what if the organization says, well, we really can't promise, we can try our best to let it go to that organization? Would this council be okay with still allocating that money to that organization? Or say, well, then, we'll find somewhere else to distribute it?
I guess, see, we didn't, because we didn't speak to Food Share before tonight, I don't know if I'm ready to add them to the list because I would want to have a conversation with them around, you know, could we do an allocation designated? Would it go to the whole county? I'm not saying they're not needing the whole county, but this is, so I think that there's, we brought information on organizations that we had talked to and that were committed to doing work in Santa Paula. And even with 805, and we made sure that there were representatives from both 805 and, I don't know, yeah, both 805 and Poder that were here tonight. It doesn't seem like to me that there's questions about the Poder Popular, but we did make sure that there was a representative of 805 who could speak to, you know, whether or not they were working with families in Santa Paula. And I think part of our thought was that because it is our understanding that they are also working with families in Santa Paula, that, you know, they are helping with things like rental assistance and utility assistance and those kinds of things. And so, it felt like it allowed us an opportunity to reach maybe a part of the community that was, I mean, there's a lot of need, right? And so, we were trying to figure out how to best spread the impact across the community. I don't know if you want to ask any questions directly of the representative who is here or...
Of the...
Of 805.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please come on.
We have a pair of questions on Food Share and the relationship.
Yeah. Yeah, we've already helped with 10 families so far in Santa Paula, and they've each received a $1,000 check that we give to every family that's there. If the money's allocated and it's earmarked for Santa Paula families only, we'll make sure it's only for Santa Paula families. Every dollar in is a dollar back out for that. So, and while we are, our office is technically based in Santa Barbara, the hardest hit county has been Ventura County, and the majority of our funding has gone to families in Ventura County. We're also an organization that's built on volunteers from the community, and so, we have at least 100 volunteers in Ventura County that make up the network that Mayor Chavez was talking about. I can answer any other questions as well about 805 Undocu Fund.
Do you do reporting similar to what we saw from Community Action, though, as far as the actual dollars spent per community and that sort of thing?
Yes.
So, those are actual reports?
Yep, they can be created and issued.
And I apologize because you were not here at the meeting where the 805 DocuFund presented. And they had, similar to the Community Action, they were very detailed on where the assistance of the, what they call the Emergency Assistance Fund, was going to, and it was rental, utility, and transportation. But they did, and if we can get, remind, can you, would you have that link to that video presentation provided to the council member? Because it was, they were here...
They had a PowerPoint.
They had a PowerPoint.
Could we also then contribute the money to the county foundation and have it directed to 805 DocuFund?
Sure. Because they're not taking a penny. So, it's a pass-through, and that's great to alleviate any concerns you might have.
I would, just, in this political climate, I'd feel comfortable having it go to the foundation.
Okay. The other thing I was going to mention is if Poder Popular can share...
Food Share.
Food Share, because there's a relationship with the food pantry. Thank you so much, yeah. There's a relationship with food pantries that supports not only Poder Popular and food, but there's multiple pantries in Santa Paula. In particular, Our Lady of Guadalupe Church, for instance, is one site. There's also a site at People's Place, so if...
Plus Spirit of Santa Paula.
Spirit of Santa Paula. So, on the food piece, it's an investment that will trickle down to not just one organization, but multiple organizations, which I think is, they can really stretch the dollar in terms of Food Share, getting things that are essential, especially as we go into the holidays, because we're going to see an increase of need. Andy, do you want to add anything about?
Well, you have to check with Food Share, but I'm fairly sure, and I just toured them last week, I recommend you do that, that if you give money to them, it doesn't necessarily mean they're going to get more support to Santa Paula. So, all the different people are receiving things, they have established relationships. So, all the pantries here, so Poder Popular, for example, gets a couple hundred boxes. And then, Spirit does this as well, but Poder Popular gathers food from all sorts of other sources and donations and relationships with supermarkets and stuff. So, they supplement that. So, if you come on a Thursday to watch the giveaway, you'll see the two giant pallets of Food Share boxes. And if you go to Spirit, you'll see the same thing. And then, you'll see a bunch of volunteers stuffing all sorts of stuff into those boxes. So, I checked with Food Share, but I'm pretty sure that doesn't change the equation, it just goes into their budget, and they're a fantastic organization. But if you do supplement the pantries here, including Poder Popular, then the Food Share boxes are being supplemented by a bunch of other food, and that would be cash that goes directly in. And just, I'm standing here, then Poder Popular, because they have people in the office, are doing utility assistance and rental assistance as well, so kind of one-stop shop. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silvell. Yes, Ms. Cornejo.
What about giving 30,000 to the foundation, the county foundation, and directing that to be split 20 to Lucha, Poder Popular, and 10 to 805 Undocu Fund? Because their neighbor support fund is for immediate relief and has separated itself specifically from politics. And that is a concern that I have because of that.
Do you want to split again?
The 30 to the foundation, but it would be 20 to Lucha, Poder Popular, and 10 to the 805 Undocu Fund. But again, they will be careful with their activities to make sure that they are apolitical. And that's my concern about putting a target on our back over pot. And then, the other 20 could either, as Mayor suggests, the Food Share and the Community Action, or any split of those. But I would like to go for the 30 to the foundation, but to be split to those organizations since they are promising a direct pass-through. It's a very solid organization that I'd feel comfortable having those funds go to, as long as we can earmark.
So, can we take a...
I know I confused it, I apologize, but...
And then, what can do to split? Go ahead.
I just want to make sure I understood what Andy just shared. If we give money to Food Share, it's not going to change what they allocate to Santa Paula or our pantries. It's just going to go into their budget, right?
You can earmark money through Food Share to designate additional purchases that would be disseminated just strictly to Santa Paula. And you can talk to Monica White about that. They'll make that possible, especially as we're going into Thanksgiving. There's only a limited number, for instance, currently being distributed of turkeys, for instance. And so, if we say, hey, we're giving you some money, and we want to earmark that just for Santa Paula, they will find a way to purchase items at a lower cost and distribute to the pantries in this region, which, if you go on the website, you can see that there's multiple pantries. So, there's a way, it's been done before. And I know because I worked at the United Way for five years. So, we can earmark it, and they can say, we're going to purchase X amount, and it can be disseminated only to Santa Paula. They'll find a way to make that possible for us because the food trickles down. And so, we're not just serving one pantry, but we're serving multiple. And I think that was the point, to spread our dollar to as many places as possible, especially because food assistance is so prevalent right now, and we've seen such an increase in need with people showing up to the pantry. We just had a food, a press conference here where Julia Brownlee, we were at the distribution of Our Lady of Guadalupe. I mean, you saw the number of people that were coming to those spaces. You have the pantry, obviously, of Poder Popular, but you also have multiple other ones, and I think we should spread it as much as we can.
Not on the split, but just if I could make a comment, the presentations that we've received this evening have been exceedingly helpful in my understanding, the organizations and what they do, and how the funding and everything. So, I really appreciated that to help me formulate these because I didn't come in with these numbers. It's been formulated based on what we've learned this evening, so.
So, minimum 50,000, so far, we have a consensus of that. I'm just going to do a straw poll regarding the agencies listed. So, there's a recommendation, and literally, if we give it to the foundation and they do the distribution, it's still the same. So, we won't get caught up necessarily on that. But 30,000, 30,000 to the neighbors' fund, and that split would be 10, 10, and 10. I'm sorry. What was that split?
20.
20 to Lucha, which is Poder Popular, because that's a program of Lucha. And then, what is the other split for the 30?
805.
805 Undocu Fund.
So, 20 and 10, that's 30? Okay. Do we all agree on that 30,000 split for the neighbors' fund? 20 for Lucha and 10 for the 805 Undocu Fund?
Can I just ask a question of the foundation? If that were the way that the money were to get to those other two organizations, is there, what is the process?
Both organizations have already been checked with both the IRS as well as with the state of California in terms of compliance. So, those reports have been done, that's why we have given other dollars. So, what would end up happening is the check could be written as soon as we get the authorization. And then, a report comes back. Once we get all of the documentation, you know, we do our annual reporting, so. Then, it's our responsibility and takes it off of staff here. So, it's just, it's one of the services of the foundation, which is nice. Thanks.
I just wanted to make sure it wouldn't somehow add to bureaucracy or anything, but if they've already both been checked.
They've been around for a while.
I just wanted to check, you know, we operate in a different world, so I just had to ask the question.
The mayor did ask if we agreed with the 30,000 in that allocation, and I agree with the concept, not voting, but I agree with that concept so far.
Okay. If it was split 20,000 for Lucha and 10 for the 805 Undocu Fund, is there a straw poll that says that we're okay with that split?
I'd rather it all to go to Poder, but if people feel strongly about 805, I'm going through the foundation, I'm fine. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have had this on, but I'm fine. I would prefer all 30 to go to Poder, but if it's, if other people feel strongly about 805, I'm fine as long as we go through the foundation.
And then, the other recommendation that you had made and the other one that I brought to the table was doing 10 for Community Action and 10 for Food Share. Is there support for that, that would increase? Obviously, we'd go from 30 to 50, but it's all tied to humanitarian, and it's a holistic approach to ensuring that every single piece of the puzzle is funded, at least for urgent need.
I would agree with that concept as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
A quick question, which I think is mostly directed at Mike, because Food Share's obviously been a recipient through the fund, is the CAC, do you know if they've put in or asked for funding?
I'm sorry.
If the CAC...
No, they haven't.
Community Action?
No, I don't have them in my list right now, but it's still open.
Yeah.
But that wouldn't matter in this case because it would be, I'm sorry, if it were coming through us, it wouldn't matter. All that would matter was reporting back to you that they were in compliance as a qualified 501(c)(3). That's what we would do as donors.
Because it would move quicker and more streamlined for us and for our finance department if it was going to one source designated. That's why I was asking.
And then, in other cases, we also are working with other donors who are looking at other kinds of matching funds. And so, these are the sort of things that are helpful, having it come through the foundation because we can find other people to say, look at the lift that we're getting, help match, so.
That's a great philanthropy strategy. So, it looks like...
Real quick, Mayor, refresh my memory, Mr. Silvell, did he say that Poder Popular was also assisting in utility bills?
Yes.
Okay. So, actually, it serves kind of the same purpose, sort of the same purpose of 805 Undocu Fund.
But they're different audiences.
Right.
I also see that... Sorry, button issues today. I see the Community Action vehicle everywhere in Santa Paula, and they're outside Poder Popular, and they work with them very well, too. So, they're all working together. And I think they are the logistical, putting things together for some. So, I think there's a good need, and I know that they're helping our community as well. Does this mean that it should all go to the foundation if they can all be distributed?
So, since it's 100%, it's just a pass-through. And they have the grant-making piece already in place, the infrastructure. To Mr. Singer's point, it's going to be easy to alleviate process on our end if we just give it to one with an earmark.
I know if we're going to make a donation separately, let's say, to the CAC, that our finance director's going to look for paperwork from them and some of the vetting that you just heard VCCF does. And so, I don't have as many resources at my fingertips to make that happen quickly.
And you're also able to designate, as you've said, in terms of where the funds need to go.
I do have a question on the point that you brought up about getting funds matched. If you got funds matched for all of this that were designated, would that, those matched funds also come to Santa Paula? Or would those be put into your pot to serve the county just...
It would depend because, so after we, whatever happens tonight, right, we would be putting news out to all of our donors and the whole community in terms of a new partner, and this is where things are going. And then, we get phone calls from folks. So, sometimes, it's really going to be as general as, oh, I didn't realize that there was a Community Action group, let me give dollars. Or, I didn't realize the need that was there in Santa Paula. So, it really varies, I can't, and we don't have a donor right now that's saying, you know...
Right. It was just a question because you brought up the fund matching.
It's like, let's find them.
It's a great question. No, actually, it's a great question. However, the one thing I'll add to that is, like, to your point, you're leveraging dollars to bring in more dollars, and right now, we haven't given a penny. So, the funds that have been given out already have come because of generous people from all parts of the county. So, I think it helps all of us to make the investment because they're able to leverage. And they do a really good job in the grant-making process to be able to distribute funds, vet the funds. And since it's designated and they're not taking administrative fee, most organizations take about 15%. So, that is the generosity of the leadership of the foundation. And again, Vanessa Bakhtel, because she's such a big part and has a big heart for the community. So, in that sense, is there, Ms. Crossway, is it possible you can formulate a motion potentially of 50,000 to the neighborhood fund with the breakdown?
So, before I do that, let me just ask one other question of council, because then, once there's a motion on the table, we'll move forward with that and sort of move on. So, first, a comment that a lot of the things that you talked about earlier, Mayor, was already stuff that Councilmember Ornellis and I were working with staff on. It's just, we didn't have time to get that all together. we didn't have time to get that all together. Like, we already have draft language for the ledge platform and some other things. Like, it just, we tried really hard, and it, with the server and the short timeline, it just didn't make it into this agenda. So we didn't want to hold up the humanitarian relief for some of those other things, but know that we have had a much more expansive conversation than on the funding. It's just that we were really hearing from community partners that there's a great need, especially with the holidays coming up and everything else going on, that there's just a lot of more immediate community need. And so we really didn't want to delay that any farther. But do know that, that we have obviously had a much more expansive conversation than this. My other piece is I do want to just get sort of direction from council as we have those conversations. Are, are, you are wanting us to continue to have the conversation about the other forms of assistance that aren't just the humanitarian aid?
Like the legal aid.
Raise your hand if you would like that, just to give.
To at least be able to have us bring more back, back more information.
Information. We're not voting on the.
I mean, we're not saying an amount, we're not saying, we're just saying, are you willing to have us bring back some more conversation around that when we bring back the rest of the things?
I'm always open to information, but I'm reluctant on that versus additional aid if there are funds. But I'm, I'm happy to hear where the need is and what, what you would get for the funds donated.
I just wanted to, I did, we just wanted to make sure, before we spent more time in researching that and bringing back more conversation, we just wanted to see if council was willing to have the conversation.
And I, but I do say I'm reluctant, and I don't know how anyone else feels. But if there is interest by enough members of the council, please do. But I'm, I just, I, I often feel that the humanitarian heat shelter food may be more of a necessity than, where we can have a bigger impact than the amounts that might, we might be able to contribute to a legal fund. So, but that's just, throw that into the pot for discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember Cornejo. Also shows the same reluctance, just because I, we all know how long these legal battles can last and the costly, costiness of it. I mean, you have some current information. If you think, I mean, I personally believe if the committee thinks there's something that comes up that you should bring back to us, but I don't think at this point that, for me, it should be a priority. The humanitarian part probably is the, the priority.
You want to add anything to that, Mayor?
I am actually, I understand where you're coming from about the administration using this as a way to stop an allocation of sorts. But I think we're already in there. If we're going to get it, we're going to get it, right? We've already signed on to legal battle. We've already made a statement. Like, if he wants to play whack-a-mole, then let him play whack-a-mole. The legal, the, where the rule of law at the end of the day will, and we've been seeing that the courts on many cases have been favorable to restoring and fighting against some of those executive orders, let's say. And so it's starting to get bolder and bolder, I think the court system is, in addressing some of these things that eventually will trickle down and put us in a, on the right side of history, I'd say. But I, I want to hear the information, because they might have information about, you know, we have a child that was abandoned, and, or because with their parent, I mean, I, we got to hear the, all that stuff to understand the depth of it.
Okay. The one point that, that struck me was someone who is on the path and very near being legal and having those types of issues being a problem. But I'd, I'd want to know what kind of costs are involved in a case like that. That's the kind of research I would want to know, because if we can't have a big enough impact, then we could be greater impact by helping the people in our city with humanitarian. So that's the kind of thing that I'd want to know. So just more actual cost. Thanks.
So there, I guess, there, can you go back and get some more information?
Yes.
And in particular, if you can ask the attorney, and, and Ms. Castillo, could you provide them with a little guidance regarding, there's a case in Texas that is going to have an impact regarding the DACA renewals, the ability, you know, there's, there's cases, because it was stopped by the court, then it's, it's gone through an appeal process of some sort. There's going to be a judgment on it that would allow, potentially if the court reverses its action, would allow the continuance of DACA renewals. And that might be an area, to the councilwoman's point regarding supporting something tangible that we can support that would continue someone's ability to maintain their residency in, in the city.
Yes, Mayor, I can do that. And it sounds like the council is interested in the types of legal services that have impact in, in quantity of effects on lives and not so much, you know, one or two cases. That could go on and on.
Right. And I think what Councilmember Crossway and I heard the most about was the impact on underage people, youth, young adults, children affected. That's the piece that I think was, the concentration of that conversation and how important the legal support is to, to help them have representation and a voice. And I get the humanitarian need, and I'm really happy that as a council, we're agreeing to 50,000 immediately. But I, I appreciate the opportunity of going back to these groups and being able to continue that conversation and understand more personally, but also as part of a commit, this committee, to be able to bring it back and share it to you all in a, in a way where we can see how it's going to impact our community. Not so broad as like, oh, well, there's a legal need. Of course, we know there's a legal need. There's a humanitarian piece, too. But I think it's at least worth the conversation. And Councilmember Crossway and I can go back and continue those conversations and then bring it back to council and then have another conversation like we're having now. But we'll be better prepared with more information, because it was all so quickly before the deadline that we had. I just appreciate us having this conversation as council, and this is a good start.
And Counselor, just to point, Texas versus United States. There, and it was a late ruling in October 2025, but then the government shutdown started. And so that's the case that eventually might have, be a trigger to allow the continuance of DACA, which would reopen the process. So kind of want to see where that, because the fees to apply for that, when if it reopens, could be a space, because it's helping children that were here, you know, brought by their parents, it's no choice of their own. And that could be a space that we might plan compromise on.
But again, going back to that, with, with our limited budget in a small city, with a city with many people with many needs, you know, we, we raked the chamber over the coals with a large report in order to give them 30,000, and there should be promoting an economic development, which may raise funds, which will help us all be lifted. So we need to just weigh what we spend where of our, of our whole city's tax dollars and where the best for our community is. I am very, very supportive of this humanitarian immediate relief that we're providing to our community. So.
Thank you. All right.
So the only other thing I'll add before we have a motion is, I still probably would have rather started with 30 to 40,000. But if, if it's the council's wish that we allocate all 50 right now for the humanitarian, that's fine. But I probably would have preferred that we sort of stick with a portion of it and then come back, since we had spent most of our time on the, the organizations that we had brought forward. But if it is the council's will that we allocate all of it at this point.
That's what we just deliberated.
No, I know. I'm just saying that I would have been, I would have been more comfortable saving more of it for a later allocation instead of sort of spending it all upfront right now. That's the only, the thing that I'm.
I think we, I think we've agreed on consensus of increasing it to 50,000 and doing the breakdown. And so you've done.
But we still leave the option open to.
Options always open to allocate more at any time, as long as the funds are available. And again, I see this as a homeless prevention strategy, because if people are on the edge, this can really help them avoid getting into a place of being homeless. And we've invested how much on that? Right? So we, we have a consensus. We've had it. We just deliberated it.
I'm not allowed to make a motion. Maybe somebody can.
Your question, Councilmember Ornellis, the mayor is correct with, if I fancy Googling, you have to kind of contact them directly, but it sounds like you can petition that things or money or specific items go to particular cities or places.
You're meaning like Food Share?
Correct.
Yeah. So that would be my only concern with Food Share and the Community Action Fund, unless we're, well, either way, if we're giving it all to VCCF to give to these organizations, making sure that the money that goes there is going to come back to Santa Paula. That's the only thing.
Would you add that to the motion? And would you consider making a motion?
Absolutely. Where do I start? I don't even know where to start.
Let's roll.
Okay. So I make a motion. I make a motion. Where is it? I don't even know where it is. What do I have to read? Nothing?
You actually have.
I just made it up. So I make a motion for us to get, are we, we're giving all 50.
50,000?
We're giving 50,000 to the Ventura County Community Foundation, being split as follows. 20,000 to Lucha, Poder Popular, 10,000 to the eight oh five on DocuFund, 10,000 to Food Share, and 10,000 to the Community Action Fund with the stipulation that all of the funds that each of these agencies receive come right back to the, the people of Santa Paula. Second.
There's a motion? There's a second? Additional discussion?
Uh, I have to say this?
No, but it may be separate motion.
Oh, and I'd like to make a motion also.
There's a motion on the table already, so.
Can we vote so I can make another one?
She could amend her motion.
So would you like to amend the motion?
Yes, I'll amend my motion. I'm adding also for council to, or making a motion to become an endorser of the Ventura County Community Foundation's Neighborhood Support Fund, which supports immigrant families, immigrant families. And in recognition of the community's growing needs, consider allocating an additional amount of surplus funds to be available for future immigrant support or inclusion efforts as needs arise.
And I will accept that amendment to your motion.
Motion accepted by Councilmember Cornejo.
Thank you.
All right. Are we good? Can we all vote now? Yes? All those in favor, unless you want to make a final thought?
No.
All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Woo! We did it.
Santa Paula carries. Thank you, Miss.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you, guys. Thank you all for being here.
First, again, thank you very much.
Mayor, can I do one, before, before all of our, the rest of our public leaves, I did have one of my report items is the Future Leaders Initiative. I just wanted to make one more plug for that. If you know anyone between the ages of 18 and 26, the Southern California Association of Governments is doing a pilot civic leadership program. And the participants, it's going to be mostly online, but then there will be one opportunity to go in person for the last meeting. And the participants will get $500 for participating. The deadline is next week. So if you know anyone between the ages of 18 and 26 who live in the SCAG region, please let them know about the program. I can get you the link to the application. Thank you.
Let's get it out to, to the city channels. Yeah, that's great. Forward, yeah. Awesome. Thank you so much. All right. We are going to go to 11B, and then we'll come back. 247 Grant Line Purchase and Sale Agreement, Mr. Singer, actually, Ms. Castillo.
Yep.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and council. We have a few visuals that our city clerk can pull up when she has a moment. But this item is asking council to, to approve a resolution that would authorize the city manager to sign a purchase and sale agreement for a property known as 247 Grant Line, and also to accept the property pursuant to the government code requirements. So the developer, Limonera Lewis, as you know, is the master developer for The Harvest at Limonera. One of the public facilities that they are responsible to construct for the city is the bridge that will span Santa Paula Creek and connect The Harvest to the west side of Santa Paula. In order to do that, they had to obtain permits from Ventura County Watershed Protection District so that they could maintain access from their channel. And you'll see on this picture here, there's a gray area, and I wish I had a pointer to show you, but on the left side of Santa Paula Creek, thank you, Julie, there's like a, kind of a gray loop. If you go down, there's, there you go. So right above Santa Paula Street, that's the turnaround area that the watershed will need to maneuver their vehicles for maintenance access to the channel there. And in order to, to provide that to them, we are purchasing the property there, 247 Grant Line. And this has been a process that's been in, in the works for a while, under our agreement with Limonera Lewis. They can ask the city for assistance in using the power of eminent domain. And we were able to use a, a friendlier version of that process called friendly condemnation, and it resulted in more of a cooperative negotiation with the property owner. So before you tonight is, is this purchase and sale agreement for approval. And the city manager also has some other ideas that we can use for this property, because even though watershed only needs that wave type shape for its uses, we are purchasing the whole parcel. And that will be used as possible place for other city services and amenities.
All right. Any questions? Or Mr. Singer, you want to add anything?
Well, I would just add, the advantage to us having control of that entire parcel is the likelihood that we will eventually see access to the trail there. And for both maintenance purposes, possibly for parking or gathering as an entryway to the north and south trail, and also to the bridge, having extra land is never a bad thing for a municipality. It could serve as kind of a small pocket park, or a gathering space, or a maintenance area. All those things would have to be pursued over time, but it would be nice to have that additional control.
Emergency response?
Yeah.
Space in case we have to exit folks, right? Okay. Any questions? I think we're all.
Well, the only question I had, as you know, was for repurposing. And just like the caretaker house at Harding Park, is there any possibility that house could be moved for city use?
That's something we could look at. It's, it's quite old, so I, I'm not sure the condition it's in. It might be somewhat historic. I, we'd have to look, but.
It's not under the Mills Act.
I mean, clearly, you can see the house is underneath the gray section.
Yeah.
And so it, it has to be removed.
Yeah.
Even if it's moved. Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, I'll, I'll move to approve, to authorize the city manager to execute the proposed purchase and sale.
It would be, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, it would be adopt resolution number 7594.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I move to adopt resolution 7594 to authorize the city manager to execute the proposed purchase and sale agreement to acquire the real property known as 247 Grant Line, Santa Paula, California, and all documents necessary to carry out the agreement, and authorize acceptance of the property pursuant to government code section 27281.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, there's a second. Any other? Any additional comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. We are going to jump back on the agenda to city council reports. We'll start with Ms. Crosswhite.
All right. Let's see. I already told you all about the great extreme heat presentation. Again, if any of you are interested in seeing that, I'll get you the link. And that was with the Southern California Association of Governments Energy and Environment Committee at our Legislative Communications and Membership Committee meeting for SCAG. We did learn that there might be some changes. There's a piece of legislation the federal government is considering in a housing bill package that if it were to pass could institute some changes to the community service block grant funds that we heard about earlier. So just wanted to let that, pass that along, that those funds may be, and in the future may be tied to housing production. So if that bill, set of bills does pass, I will let you know. Also, we had a meeting, well, we got an update from our new Senate pro tem, Monique Limon, who has officially taken her oath of office. She won't be sworn in until January, but she did take the official oath of office. And so we met with her, and she was talking about how her number one priority is going to be the budget, and there's a lot of competing interests in the budget, and so it's going to be a really tough budget year. Let's see. Also, at our Clean Power Alliance meeting, we had an extensive presentation on battery energy, storage technology, and safety. So if anyone's interested in that, there's a recording of that presentation. At my Ventura County Transportation Commission meeting, we learned that on December 11th, between 6:00 and 8:00 PM, at the Collector Car Vault here in Santa Paula, there's going to be a Santa Paula Branch Line Trail Master Plan Community Update meeting. So if anyone is interested in the Santa Paula Branch Line Trail Master Plan Update, that meeting will be on December 11th here in Santa Paula. We also learned about some changes in the Brown Act that were enacted in state law with SB 707, which are going to impact our community because we have more than 30,000 residents. And so there are going to be, I know that, I already asked the city attorney, and she said that BBK is preparing a memo to inform us of some of the changes. The law, if it takes effect January 1st, we have until July 1st to be compliant with the new rules related to meetings. I had a California Council of Governments meeting, and we are continuing to talk about SB 375 modernization. So we'll see how those conversations go. No, they haven't been able to come to any final agreements. There's a lot of different competing interests in that. It's probably going to end up going to see if someone can carry some sort of legislation in the new year. The deadline for that legislation will be February. So we'll know pretty soon in the new year if there's going to be some bills moving forward related to modernization there. The mayor and I had a, along with the Planning Commission, had our Economic Development Subcommittee meeting, and there's two items that you can expect future workshops on. One is the retail vacancy ordinance item, and the other is, will be related to special events and special events permitting and that kind of thing. We also learned, got an update on where the potential mixed-use development at Harvest, like what's proposed now. We, the council doesn't really get any suggestion, or doesn't get any oversight in that, but we did recommend that we would like it to see it be bigger than what is currently proposed. Because we had authorized as a council up to 10,000 square feet, and it is less than half of that right now. So we can't mandate it, but we strongly recommended that it should be more than that. Councilmember Nellis and I had multiple conversations around immigration, and then just a lot of events and different things. We all, most of us were at the Board of Supervisors meeting on the Santa Paula Hospital on Tuesday. I'll let someone else give an update on that if they want to. And then we've attended the Veterans Day Ceremony. The other thing that I will say is that the, there was a grand opening, and it ended up being a ribbon cutting. It was, I thought I was going for a tiny art show at the new Body and Soul Day Spa, and it ended up being a ribbon cutting. So we have a new day spa in downtown Main, on Main Street in Santa Paula. They have a great little tiny art show if you want to see it. There's a number to call on the front, because sometimes she's with clients, and so she doesn't always have someone right now at the front. But great little art show, and spontaneously there was a ribbon cutting. And then...
Where is that, Janice?
It's in the 800 block of Main Street. There, yeah, there, there's a, used to be a little...
Was there a salon there before?
Well, it was a little boutique, a little boutique store. But anyway, so it's now a day spa. And then the last thing is, the Art About Ag has opened, and there are some, at the Santa Paula Art Museum, I went to the official opening, and there are some great little pieces in there. So I would encourage you to go check out the show at the Santa Paula Art Museum. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Cornejo, go for it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Pretty busy couple of weeks. I, on the 6th, I attended the Ventura Regional Sanitation District as the city's representative. On the 8th, I sponsored and attended the Boys and Girls Club Light Up the Season event. I sponsored and decorated a tree, and I also won a tree. And it's a wonderful event, great fundraiser, lots of fun, and I encourage people to look out for it for next year, and be sure and attend and support. I, along with most of the council, were able to attend the Veterans Day Ceremony at Veterans Park, always touching, always moving, and well-attended this year, I felt. Represented the meeting at the VCOG in Camarillo on the 13th. And then later that day, this was last Thursday night, there was a Blue Ribbon Committee meeting up at the hospital, where we were given a very bleak presentation on the county budget for health care, with the pretty bold staff recommendation to not spend the millions to do the hospital earthquake retrofit, which does mean that that hospital should, will probably, probably not likely, continue beyond 2030. Then again, added to that, additional bleak news that probably they will not, would not be funding a large hospital on the 126. None of this is decided for sure, a lot to be debated, but they're probably going to look for some compromise in between. We need to be absolute advocates for that, and to make sure that something's done, and there's an answer before that date hits. Because as we all know, government moves too slowly, and it's going to come fast. So it's like this train coming at us. So the next day, as Councilmember Crosswhite mentioned, our mayor had to leave, and so I was able to step in and speak, representing the advocacy for good health care, and not to be forgotten in our valley, and to urge the board to act quickly and boldly to work on this problem of finding good health care for not only Santa Paula, but the whole valley here. So I believe that was it. Thank you.
Ladies first.
I'll just add to what Councilmember Crosswhite said. We had a lot of meetings and conversations around the Immigration Ad-Hoc Committee. I think that today was a great start to our efforts in supporting that. I don't think I have anything else to report. Just that, thank you.
Close us off, Cornejo.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start off with the Senior Advisor Committee, which meets the first Thursday of every month at 1:30. And there's always something going on there. They are short one committee member, so I know they're actively taking applications. They do things like the senior meals, they have events there all the time, they have a lot of exercise for the seniors, and I think recently they just went to the opening of the Santa Paula Theatre Center play, which I also, I went to see it the other night. If you get a chance to go see it, it's a hilarious play of a Christmas Carol gone wrong, so. And also on Saturday, the 8th, there was Boys and Girls Club Light Up the Season, myself and Hadi, we decorated three trees. But one thing, Councilmember Cornejo forgot to mention, was that we also got to see the work done by the Painters Union of the Boys and Girls Club. Fantastic. And I know there was supposed to be some kind of event, but because of the rains, it was canceled, so that'll be forthcoming. We went to the Veterans Day, many councilmembers went to the Veterans Day service, and it's sad to hear that our veterans are getting older, and as time goes on, there's going to be fewer of them. So I urge you to go to the Memorial Day and Veterans Day services, because some of them will be here for a while, and longer. We need to support them. Also on Thursday, when it was raining heavily, myself and Councilmember Cornejo went to the Blue Ribbon Committee at the hospital, and as she mentioned, the views was not encouraging. In fact, when they started talking about the declining patients that go to the hospital, we couldn't help but think that because they removed the OBA and ICU, that attributed to some of the loss of patients. Then they were going to schedule a Board of Supervisors meeting on the 18th, and most of us showed up, and I was also able to speak. And primarily, just to add on, to build a new hospital is going to cost 300 to 400 million, and because of the great, big, beautiful bill in this current administration and HR1, the funding is just not there, plus the deficit of the county. So it kind of looked like it was going to be all or nothing, which all was, all would have been great, nothing is unacceptable. But to our supervisors' credit, Kelly Long, when they started talking about forming subcommittees again, she said, no, this will take way too long. So they did schedule another meeting and directed staff, and it was unanimous to accept the recommendation, or the receiving file, but also direct staff to come back with alternatives for alternate use and location of a future facility for the valley here. And that is my report, Mayor.
All right, just real quick, this, was it today or yesterday that the invitations were sent for our committees?
This morning.
So this year, as part of establishing maybe a new tradition, we're having a thank you appreciation to those that serve on all of our commissions and committees. And following that, we're going to be going and walking alongside them at the holiday parade this year as a show of solidarity for all the time and that they spend volunteering to be part of their city government. So that's an open invitation to those that serve on those committees. Again, I had a lot going on today. Thank you again for indulging me with mariachi this evening. And with that said, we are going to go on to agenda item, City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real briefly, a couple of things to report. I want to make sure the community knows that we had a system failure. Our server went down last Monday, and the restoration process for that meant we were without emails all week. They were finally back on this last Monday, but in case the public was trying to reach us, we were non-responsive, and that's the reason for it. We're looking at better redundancy opportunities down the road so this doesn't happen again. There's also some pavement going on in town. Now, of course, the rains have, you know, caused some delays, but luckily, most of the concrete work was well underway and isn't too affected. It is now done. The pavement actually started today, and the contractor still believes that they will finish Main Street before Thanksgiving, and then they'll move up to the streets that are on the lower part of the hill. And so I can't say with certainty what dates those will be, because we do have more rain scheduled for tomorrow and Friday, so there may not be much activity in the next few days. But that work is continuing, and we'll be getting some more information out to the community about that. We were also the recipient of an award that our Community Development Director received from Zen City. They're the ones that give us our analytics to our social media and web activities and some of our outreach campaigns. I'll put it in the council office so you can see it. It was really a lovely Crystal Key Rising Star Award, and it was a nice recognition. Speaking of recognition, I had a chance last week to go to the Municipal Management Assistance of Southern California Conference. At their annual conference, I was given recognition for my mentorship of people and giving back in the profession. That was just a really nice gesture. So I'll put that award out in my office, and you can take a look at it there. It was a pleasure being part of Veterans Day, being at the County Board of Supervisor meeting yesterday, and I've already done some follow-up with Supervisor Long and with Limoneira. And then, of course, what is my last note there? Oh, had the opportunity to participate in VCLA's forecast and their Civic Alliance presentation. So that is it from me. Just to note that the council will not have its regular meeting in December. Instead, we're consolidating. So the next meeting for the council will be December 10th. However, we do have a workshop scheduled for December 2nd, and that will be at the Community Center, an opportunity to hear from our city engineer about options related to our pavement management program cycle two, and hear from the public and the council as to different options.
Great. Item 12A.
Oh, at 6:00 PM. Yeah.
Item 12A, one of the things that was mentioned, and because of the issue of the hospital, someone mentioned that the issue was not on our policy, on our legislative platform. So because of the urgency, what's our, remind me of the policy we have, when we need to add something to the agenda when it's an emergency situation? I can't remember off the top of my head.
You'll need, I think it's consensus without an objection.
Okay. Ms. Cornejo, do you want to share?
Yeah, I had brought this up to the mayor about the fact that I'd like to see if we can consider doing a resolution of our intent to move forward with pretty much demands for proper health care in the valley. And so I'd like to see if we could have staff work on that and present that, and I don't know if the, and the meeting that the supervisors will have is in February. Don't recall the date exactly. It was at the 10th? So I would, yes, Mr. Mason is saying yes. So I'd like to see, if not in December, our January meeting, to update our legislative policy on that and have a resolution of support for, however you'd want to word it, improved, a resolution to solve the problem of the...
Providing access to care.
Yeah, the health care in the valley, for Santa Paula and the valley, due to the impending closure of the hospital on the hill. Appreciate that.
Are you all right? So it's consensus without objection?
I'm a little tired now, so I can probably word it better or help with that on that, but I think staff is well aware of the issues and can help with that, too.
Yeah, and just for the council's edification, you do have it in your strategic plan. So that does provide us some guidance.
Okay.
In addition, I think weaving it in, not only to the legislative platform, but specifically a resolution would be an even stronger statement.
Okay, I would appreciate that. Thank you, fellow members.
Anything else on 12A? We're good? Meeting adjourned.